Welcome to the study session for the Lakewood City Council for this Monday, December ten, two thousand and eighteen. We'll call this meeting to order and we have, for our first item for discussion tonight, we have a hospital update for Western State Hospital from its CEO, Mr. David Holt. Welcome.
Thank you. It's good to be here. Can you hear okay?
Yes, Mr. Holt, we're here.
Well, it's really good for us to be here tonight. I brought part of my team with you, with me today to give you an update on the hospital. I'm the new CEO of the hospital. I actually started in December of two thousand and fifteen as the chief operating officer after Dr. Jones left. I succeeded her as the permanent CEO of Western State Hospital about four months ago. With me, I'll have them present in just a few moments, but with me I have Kathy Spears, Public Information Officer. I have Dan Davis, who is our Safety and Security Officer, and Charles Sutherland, he's my new Deputy CEO, who I just brought on board. And so we're excited to give you a status update. One of my major priorities when I came into this position that I'm in is to be a straight shooter and to talk to you and tell you what we're doing and be a partner. We're your neighbors, we're inside your community. We want to be good partners and good neighbors and to do that, we need to keep the hospital safe, we need to keep you safe. And outside of our hospital grounds and we need to be good stewards of the state money that we have and to be good citizens in your good city. I'd like to just cover a quick, a couple of quick items tonight. I just want to give you a brief overview of what we'd like to cover. I'd like to talk a little bit about the governor's vision, our master plan that is due to the city of Lakewood. Some of the current construction projects we have. An overview of the way we are keeping your city safe and keeping patients in and not out in your community and also internal safety. And what we're doing to protect our staff and patients from violence within the hospital. And then finally, I'll close out, we'll have Kathy close it out with questions and answers that you might have of us. We hope to provide value to you tonight. So first of all, let me just give you a quick synopsis of where we are in the governor's vision. If you recall, the governor asked us to prepare for a two thousand and twenty-three conversion of our hospital from housing civil patients and forensic patients into becoming a forensic hospital of excellence. That means obviously that we would be moving civil patients into placements into the community or in other similar hospital settings that are secure and intact to protect the communities where they go. We're anxious for the governor's budget to be released this week because we believe it will have significant capital type of ties to our, our future related to the governor's vision and so we won't speculate on what that will contain. But we believe it will provide some relief for movement of these patients into the community in a safe setting as well as allowing us to expand our forensic populations. We have over two hundred patients in jails that need to come into our hospital to get their, it's called competency restoration, where they are evaluated and we restore them to competency so they can cooperate with their attorney and the judge in their court proceedings. And so our hospital will continue to expand to bring those types of patients in. They are in our most secure units, so they're the least threat for escape. We also are planning then to discharge our patients out into the community and we are working nonstop. We understand your concerns as a city and we'll answer some of those questions as we get into the question and answer session. So the governor's budget, two thousand and twenty-three, we're moving toward that. To accomplish that, we're doing a couple of things. One, we are currently converting two of our civil wards, that's about thirty patient wards, into forensic wards. We have discharged a number of patients from the first ward. We will start construction between January and May of next year. And then we will clear out another ward. We're going to accomplish approximately forty to sixty new beds for forensic patients by doing that conversion. To accomplish that, we need to submit a master plan to you. We know it's past due. It's old, your city planner and others are waiting for this. We anticipate that master plan, meeting with the city and our architects on January next month, and then submitting our final master plan to the city of Lakewood for construction for the next ten years in May. So you will receive our final version in May, but we plan to have a meeting with your city planning folks in January with the architects and the master planning firm. So just wanted to give you that timeline so you know when to expect our, our master plan. We also have a new building going up in our property as we speak. It is, covers four departments. We have a new, brand-new kitchen to produce food for our patients, combined with a new pharmacy, a new sterilization unit, and a warehouse, all combined in one building. That is well on its way into construction. It's going to be a beautiful new facility early two thousand and twenty-one. Maybe two thousand and twenty if we, if we can get through the weather and make that building happen. So that's an exciting new opportunity for us to have a beautiful new building. Our buildings are extremely old. I'd like to take just a moment and talk about that. We have been trying for some time, shortly after we were decertified for our CMS and we lost our federal funding, we did a major assessment of our property and discovered that really, the reasons why we were not able to get certified is because of those old buildings. Some of them predate the state of Washington in years. And CMS has basically informed us that those buildings will never be federally compliant. So we are proposing and the legislature is gaining some traction and we're hopeful in the near future that we will be able to get approval for a new hospital. That would be a major accomplishment for us because we just can't keep putting more and more money into old buildings. It's like having an old house, you can only put so much money into it and then it's going to fall down. And we just can't keep those buildings underground of our property. It's about like the city of Lakewood, all the pipes and infrastructure under that property, it could pop and blow at any time. The electrical panels are insufficient, elevators are too old, the property, the buildings are too old. And we're hopeful in the future that we can gain traction on a brand-new building. In the meantime, we're doing what we have with the resources that we have. When Cheryl Strange was here as our secretary, as our CEO before she became the secretary, we started a refresh project to paint and refurbish every ward on our grounds so our patients had a nicer environment. That project is just wrapping up. So we believe we, we may do with what we can. We're trying to get new in the future and we're anxious to make that happen. I'm going to turn it over right now to Dan Davis, our Chief Security and Safety, who can update you on how we're keeping the community safe from our patients into your community. Turn it on.
Good evening. As Dave already told you, my name's Daniel Davis. I'm the Chief of Safety and Security at Western State Hospital. I've been at Western State for approximately three years now. Prior to coming to Western State, I worked for the Department of Corrections for about fifteen years, where I served as a captain in Aberdeen. So Dave asked me to briefly talk about our security improvements that I've observed for the past three years at Western State. And you guys may already know many of our improvements throughout the years, but I'll discuss it as. So since two thousand and sixteen, we have increased our security staffing over forty percent. So we have a total of ninety-three security staff on, on site now, which allows us to, to increase our response times and add additional resources to the wards whenever needed, whenever there's an incident. We've also added security features to our facility, to our hospital, such as our quadrangle fencing. I'm not sure if you guys are aware of that, that fencing project. However, it's, it's been a huge benefit to our hospital. We have significantly reduced the amount of ULs, unauthorized leaves, in our hospital by ninety-three percent. So it's, it's a huge benefit to the hospital of adding that security feature to, to our campus. We've also added mandatory training for our staff. We've added a training called Advanced Crisis Intervention with the acronym ACIT, which is an advanced de-escalation training for our staff that are, work on the wards. We also included a course called Crisis Prevention Institute Training, which is CPI. And that's the gold standard of, again, of de-escalation training along with physical intervention and tactics for dealing with patients in a hospital setting. We've created a security officer training academy. So for many years, we've had a security staff who would complete the same training as nursing and then go on the wards and just magically become security officers because they wore a uniform. And so what we have done is we've created an intensive academy that has taught them a lot of the security functions to keep our hospital safe. We've also changed out twenty-five thousand keys inside of our facility. And I don't know if you guys remember, there's a lot of publicity in regards to our keys at Western State and how we manage the keys and locking mechanisms at the hospital. And one of them being that we, it used to take one key to get outside the hospital. It just took one key and every staff had that key and patients even knew what key it was. And so what we did was we changed the locking mechanisms and we changed the key system and, and we added this, more of a security feature. So if that one key was lost, a patient wouldn't be able to recover it and be able to leave outside of the hospital. We also incorporated an annually audit system for all staff to account for keys that every single year we account for all keys that were issued to staff at Western State Hospital. We also created a security inspection process where security staff, what they do is they, they go to every area that's, that has patients on it every single month and they, they look at security functions of that area. They look at windows, they look at hardware, they look at lights, they look at, they want to ensure that every window has a appropriate number of screws in there and it's reinforced appropriately. And, and it's, it's something again that through audits and, and through the audit process, we realized that we didn't have a functioning security inspection process at Western State, so we've corrected that process. So in summary, there's been many, many security improvements over the years. However, these are just a few of them that I witnessed and I'm excited to see where. We have a lot of different programs in, in the future that we really can't, really not going to discuss tonight. But we do have a lot of different programs that we're working on in the future and look forward to seeing those, if those happen. So and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you guys have any.
Mr. Holt, maybe we can take questions when all the presenters are done or however you prefer. It's completely up to the panel. Do you guys have any questions as we go or should we wait till the end?
That works. I'll have Charles give you an, an internal staff and patient safety initiatives that we're working on. So Dan talked about the external, keeping patients out of the community who don't belong in the community and keeping it safe. Now we'll talk about inside the hospital.
So Charles Sutherland, Deputy CEO, and understanding that the agenda, you know, is kind of short on time. And so, but one of the things we wanted to do, as Dan did, was just kind of give you folks a little bit about us as we, you know, grow our relationships with you folks. And so I've been at the hospital for two years and I've been with the state as an employee for twenty-seven years. And so that twenty-seven years, I started at Western State Hospital, worked there the first five years as a mental health technician. So I actually worked on the floor with the staff and then went to Department of Corrections, same as Mr. Davis, for about twenty years. And then I came back two years ago as a ward administrator and then moved into this position here recently. So a couple of the initiatives that we've undertaken as far as, again, addressing those safety concerns for the patients and for the staff is we have a violence reduction group that we put together and that group specifically looks at violence on a, on a hospital level as far as what's going on at Western State Hospital in regards to violence. What are the things we're seeing? What, if anything, should we be doing differently? And then we also now have started the conversation about having ward safety committees. And that's going to take it down to the ward level where we're again going to have line staff along with our psychologists, our social workers, nurses, all those folks that are actually doing the work, know the work, helping to inform us at the bigger level for the hospital on what's going on in regards to violence and what they see at the ward that we should be doing. And so I think for those folks at the ward level, it's also letting them know that they can design or come up with things that will really address that ward because we figured out, you know, hospital-wide, what may work on one ward may not be the magic solution hospital-wide. So we want to give them that little bit of freedom, but we also want that information to come up. And we'll have center-based safety committees where it'll be for East Campus, for Forensics, for South. They'll also be looking at safety, violence at a center level. And then that's going to go up to the bigger level for the hospital. So it's, it's all about us doing what we can to find out what's going on and getting those folks again closest to it to inform us. We're in the process of enclosing all of the nurses' stations. And that's, if you haven't heard, is, you know, we've had a couple of patients that have jumped across the nurses' station and unfortunately seriously assaulted several staff members. So to address that again, we enclose those nurses' stations and allow our folks to have a, a safe place that they can retreat to, a safe place that they can do their work that they need to do that can't be done on the floor. And the only other thing I was going to mention is we also have two specialty teams that are designed to be a resource that we can, you know, disseminate amongst the hospital. If, for example, you have a ward that has a high acuity, we're seeing a lot of assaults on that ward as an example, then we've got these two specialty teams that have more training in regards to de-escalation that we can tap into and have them strategically placed on these wards for as ever long as we need them there. So that's, that's another piece.
Hi, I'm Kathy Spears, Chief Public Affairs Officer for Western State Hospital. And I really, I want to reiterate thanking you folks for having us here. I, I think keeping an open dialogue with our local community members is so important. And so I hope that we are invited back periodically to give you updates on, on what we're doing at the hospital because there are many exciting things that are, that are going on. I've been here for two and a half years. I worked at headquarters at DSHS down in Olympia and I was brought up here after the two escapes that we had from the hospital. And I, I can tell you the lessons learned from that were phenomenal. We've, I see it a different hospital right now as far as safety features go and the re-keying and the training. And we've replaced windows. We've just done a lot, but there's only so much you can do in a building that was built in, you know, in the nineteen, early nineteen hundreds. It's hard to get conduit lines through all that brick. So I would welcome any of you or all of you to come into our Western State Hospital. We can take you and show you what we're doing. I don't know, we're, we're going to have to wait and see what the governor says tomorrow when he releases his, his behavioral health budget. He'll be up in Seattle doing that. So I don't know what the money looks like and how much, you know, we may end up for a new hospital, but it's not going to happen overnight. And so we hope that we can get support, you know, from local, from the local community to rebuild that hospital because I think it will make a lot of difference. So having said that, I, I do want to leave you with, this is something that Western State Hospital and/or DSHS cannot do on its own. We really need the community to be partners with us all through this effort of taking care of our folks with, with serious mental illness. I know many people do see them as scary people. There's many, you know, of our patients who don't have, you know, really strong criminal backgrounds. They're there because they've got some grave disabilities and they really would be doing better off in the local community. Unfortunately, for a lot of our population, they don't have family and support groups out there who are going to take them home and make sure they take their medications, to make sure they eat properly and take care of themselves. And so if their families can't do it, then it's, it's up to all of us to, to, to help them out because that's the only way they're going to sustain their recovery that they've had at the hospital is to continue to have that support to ensure that their medications are being taken care of, their healthcare is being taken care of. And, and that's how we can keep them from regressing and behaving badly in the community or ending up back at the hospital. So questions? We'll field any of your questions now.
I think we have, I'm sure we'll have a few. I want to kind of kick it off if the group doesn't mind. Just with regard to, you know, a question that's near and dear to the community's heart. I understand the point you both made about moving civil patients into community placement is kind of the wave of the future. And I certainly understand your, your comment, Miss Spears, about the need for community to be supportive. The question I think many of us have, and certainly the neighborhood has, is, now all of these folks came to Western State from this community. So it begs the question, if we're all in it together, how do we spread the wealth to other communities from whence they came?
And, and we are doing that. And let me just share a little bit of data with you. From Sep-, from July of first of two thousand and seventeen to September twenty eighteen, we released three hundred and twenty-two patients from the hospital. Of those, thirty-seven were placed in King County. And of those, seventeen were located in adult family homes in Lakewood. So when you kind of look at the numbers, it's.
Is it King County or Pierce? Of the three hundred and thirty-two released, you said thirty-seven were King?
No, were Pierce. I'm sorry. I misspoke on that note to Pierce County. And of those thirty-seven, seventeen went to adult family homes in Lakewood.
Okay. And we're not practitioners, obviously, so some of the lingo is, we're learning as we go along. Of the seventeen that were released into adult family homes in Lakewood, did those come from the civil commitment side or the forensic commitment side?
From the civil, yeah.
And what is the process by which folks are vetted before they're released? How does that work? So how does the system evaluate and determine whether they're ready?
It is extensive and Dave can talk, speak to that.
So I have a letter from Secretary Strange that she sent to Pierce County Commission. They had the same questions about what, what is it that, how do you vet your, your patients before they go? And I'd just like to read this. It's consistent with, with Secretary Strange. What she says is, "Many misconceptions are circulating about the agency's role with regard to the discharge of patients from state-run psychiatric hospitals and where patients go after they have been discharged." "The ultimate goal, like any other hospital, is that patients receive treatment, recover, and once recovered, begin to prepare, be discharged back to the community." "A patient can't be, cannot remain committed to a state hospital for more than a hundred and eighty days unless a court determines that the patient meets the legal criteria for involuntary commitment."
They can be recommitted after that.
For another hundred days. So we get them ready.
Through a process.
This, some of the reasons for involuntary commitment include a patient's endanger is a danger to themselves, others are as greatly disabled as a result of their mental disorder. When that's the case, the court will continue the civil commitment by issuing an additional order of commitment, which results in the patient is remaining at the hospital unless the court determines that the patient should be treated in a community setting. That comes under RCW ten dash seventy-seven. Patients are admitted for two main reasons under that forensic commitment. So now we're going to switch from civil to forensic. There's not guilty by reason of insanity, that's our NGIRI patients, or those patients under competency restoration and evaluation. So those are the patients that we have in our most secure setting, the ones that we're going to expand toward the governor's vision of a forensic center for excellence by two thousand and twenty-three. There's over two hundred of those forensic patients waiting on their jails to come into Western State Hospital. We just don't have a bed.
Those folks likely wouldn't end up getting placed in a community like the civil commitment folks.
Correct. They go back to jail and.
Let's see if you finished first.
So when we, what the other misconception that, I won't go read that one, but this I wanted to be very consistent is a misconception that we place patients in an adult family home or we place them in another placement. We really don't do that. We facilitate the need for a patient to have a place to live in an adult family home or other placement who wants a patient. We're a facilitator. We don't place people in them. They're not our homes. And I think that's important to know is that we just don't place patients. We don't determine where they go.
We can't force the adult family owners to take somebody or force a patient.
Is there somewhat of a vetting process to determine whether the adult family home A or B is suitable in terms of their ability to?
There is. Absolutely. So we have resources from ALSA, which is Aging Long-Term Care Services, as well as our social workers who meet with adult family homes and they do screenings. They assess the patient, they transfer information, let the adult family home or other placement know what the medical conditions are. They look for both medical and psychiatric conditions. They look at the history of assaults. They look at other types of things like that. And then they do an assessment to determine if that home is an appropriate venue. If it's not, we keep the patient in the hospital until we find an appropriate venue. We're hopeful, I'm very hopeful, that in the governor's budget that we might find some relief there. That we might be, it's hinted at the potential of other secure facilities and communities because we have many who are very, very hard to place, who will never make it into an adult family home. They'll never make it into a nursing home or any other type of a home. They're assaultive. They're, they're unstable in their medications. They're very, or they have other behaviors that will cause them to not be placed in a community setting. For those, we need more secure facilities and we believe that's where some of the relief from the governor will be, is creating. is creating some additional safe, secure facilities in communities where patients can be closer to their homes, but not in an unsecured setting. And we believe that will be, bring relief to the city of Lakewood as well as across the state.
So those folks that are vetted and suitable for placement in an adult family home, in an adult family home that is likewise vetted and is suitable to receive that person, who pays? Is it the state that pays for that person's care in the adult family home? Because it's not private pay, I assume, right?
Correct.
Likely not Medicaid a lot, very often.
Usually the state, DSHS or healthcare authority or Medicaid.
Medicaid, yeah.
Medicaid pays. And, and the reason why I ask is, there were, and I don't mean to monopolize, I'm just trying to get some stuff going for a conversation point. There are a lot of adult family homes in Lakewood. And the question is, why is it so close in proximity but for the fact that it is available and the folks are able to capitalize, if you will, on the opportunity? Is there any other reason why Thurston County or Olympia or, again, from your anecdotal observation, why we have so many concentrated here just so happens to be close to Western State?
I wouldn't be able to speculate. I, I think we're looking at supply and demand and people who want to open up homes, we don't control where they decided to open up those homes. They're private entities that receive my funding from the state. It'd be wonderful if they all spread out, go all over the state, but such is the nature of private businesses.
What is the average monthly charge that Medicaid pays for a, you know?
It's a, it's rated on a scale depending on what services-
On the care needs?
Yeah.
I got it.
Yeah.
So let me give you an example. We had one where there was a patient with a severe medical condition. The, they negotiate between the state and the provider to be able to find a way to meet the medical needs of that patient in that home. You might need a CPAP machine, you might need some other, like, uh, what we call a Brody chair, which are very expensive and allow the patient to sit up and as well as lay down. All of those are negotiated between the state and the provider depending on the, the particular needs of the patient. Higher reimbursement when they need more med- have higher medical conditions, et cetera.
It's all reimbursable through Medicaid, coded appropriately to get the reimbursed level to whatever it needs to be? Okay, I'm sure we have lots of other questions besides me, I'll have some follow-ups, I'm sure. Should we go around? Ms. Moss?
And then Paul.
Mr. Boki?
I, I want to follow along the deputy mayor's asking about, have you ever investigated the relationship between employees at Western State Hospital and relatives that may own adult family homes? And what are the, what are, what rules does DSHS have in place to make sure that there isn't insider trading, so to speak?
I've never heard of that before.
Well, I appreciate the question.
So you're, you're saying there's no-
I, I don't know, I've never, this is the first time I've even heard that.
I have not.
Yeah, the first time I've heard that mentioned.
Would be speculating, if I would be very, um, I could go back and check and see what our process is, I'm not familiar with that. There's clearly, we have-
So if I'm an employee, could I have my wife own an adult family home and we could just start cranking patients out?
One of the areas that I screen as CEO is whenever there's an employee that has outside employment, they have to obtain permission through this, through my office. So I take a look at, uh, I deny them on a frequent basis if they take a patient that is a DSHS client that they could, it could be a con- potential conflict of interest. That is based on voluntary self-disclosure. So what I'm looking at, I do the voluntary self-disclosure process with employees, but I would like to look deeper into your good question about, is there anybody investigating behind the scenes if they don't self-disclose?
So employment and/or ownership or just employment?
Both.
And would that include immediate family or relatives? And what are the rules? Certainly Medicaid has rules, right? I can't self-deal if I'm a doctor. They have rules on, on, there, there's all sorts of rules dealing with that.
Yeah, we have very clear guidelines for physicians that Stark Law, they don't allow-
Right.
Um, referring your own patients to your own practice in the community or to a family member. And, uh, we have, uh, business compliance folks who are constantly assessing that to make sure that does not happen. We have medical staff bylaws where our medical staff are trained on what they can and cannot do as far as referral of patients. We do have some physicians who have, who work at other facilities in the community. And that is part of that, um, process of the medical staff monitoring of our employees.
So dis- describe to me, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say that, um, the Aging Long-Term Services Support System out of DSHS, there, there is, there is a separation between them and the hospital. Uh, they don't, they, they help us facilitate in finding adult family homes that will meet the needs of whatever, you know, patient we have. But they're not employed by Western State Hospital on a day-to-day basis. So.
So you, you mentioned you don't let out forensic patients, but there is this thing of a s- what they call the civil flip that's now been documented in, in, um, published reports, I think in the Seattle Times and, and I think the TNT also had it, where you, the, for whatever reason, the criminal justice system, and I think it's counties that are not in this area, say, "Well, if we don't get the guy back, keep him, flip him, just make sure he doesn't come back." And so describe, so, so that's how criminals are getting into the system. They go, you flip them into civil, then they walk out. Describe the civil flip process.
Okay.
How does, how does somebody who committed murder or, or violent crime get to walk into an adult family home?
Well, I won't speculate in how they walk into a, uh, adult family home, but I will give you the process. So the process is that we have a forensic patient and the intent is that they go for court, for restoration. So they're in the hospital and we keep them in the hospital and at the end of their commitment time, we cannot restore them. We do medications, we do therapeutic interventions and we cannot restore them. If the patient is unrestorable, they go back to the court and the judge typically will say, if they're unrestorable, they're no longer a forensic patient, they're not going to try them. And they then flip them, they turn that into a civil commitment. It is a court order, a court commitment. We don't do that. Some of our employees feel like we move them from the forensic side and move them into the civil side. We don't do that, we, it's by court commitments. The judge will say they're unrestorable, they drop the charges and they commit them as a civil patient. We then enter them into the civil side of the house where they go through the same process as all of their civil patients. We do harden those wards where they come from because they're jail-hardened. We have concerns about them because they have multiple charges from a variety of types of crimes. And so we house them on wards that are very, we harden specifically for those eleven, we call them eleven-fourteens, felony flips. And so that is where they go through their process then of coming back as a felony flip. Our staff are very worried about them. We, we see on both the civil side and the forensic side an increase in violence in our patients on either side of the house. And I think that's important to know the difference because our staff are concerned that we're getting more of these felony flips. We're seeing it on both sides. We're seeing it on the civil side and we're seeing it on the forensic side. It's a younger patient, they are jail-hardened, they have extensive history of substance abuse where they've lost their impulse control. They are, um, big, they are male, they tend to be mostly male. They have a his- extensive history of either sexual abuse or physical abuse or both. They come from families with high unemployment. And this is the new patient that we're seeing, and it's not just a Western State Hospital, not just in the state of Washington. I just got back from what's called the WIPCA Conference, the Western Psychiatric State Hospital Association. All the state hospitals from the Mississippi River West. And this is the same population that they are seeing. Staff are scared because we are getting a whole new population on the civil side and the forensic side that we've ever seen before. As Dan and Charles mentioned to you, because of that, we are starting to shift our training extensively because the staff are not ready for this. It was a different civil patient before. We are, have a whole different civil population now, a very assaultive, impulse, um, very impulsive, substance abuse, extensive history that makes them mean, assaultive and very tou- difficult to deal with. So we're changing, we're getting the advanced ACIT training we talked about, the advanced training, the CPI, which is the industry standard in healthcare, particularly state hospitals, on how to de-escalate patients, on how to deal with patients, on how to take patients down if somebody is in danger. But we're doing a full court press, because this is a whole new patient, folks, that we have never, in society, we have had to deal with before. And I think that's where a lot of the fears of the staff are, we're not prepared on either side of the house. So whether it's a forensic patient or a civil patient or a civil flip, these are a very challenging population to deal with that we're struggling with.
And also the prosecutor has dropped the, the charges, um, the, the prosecutor has dropped the charges against the person before we go through the flip process too.
What, what kinds of substance abuse? Is there specific kinds of drugs that are causing these poli-
Guaranteed.
We're seeing the polypharms, uh, poly drug abuse, it's multiple.
Multiple, yeah.
It's starting, you know, they start with one and whether it's heroin and then you add all the rest, methamphetamines. And when you get all these together, it just literally fries their brains. And the impulse control is gone, it can't be recovered, it is extensive, it is hard to fix. And no, by a staff member, just no, you, you know, you can't, uh, have that. And they punch them in the face and break their nose. There's, uh, it is extremely difficult because we have to set some limits. But we're trying to educate our staff on how to say, give you some kind of a choice. But this is not the same civil patient we've ever faced before. And there, that's exactly what's happening. We, anytime we set a limit, it's called request denial, um, or any type of limit setting, these patients will just, uh, beat people up. And as you know, we're not at jail, we don't isolate our patients, we don't taser patients, they're patients, they're in. And so it balances the patient's safety with the staff's safety. And we're constantly having to weigh that and, and we're doing everything we can with an incredible safety security team and this VERG team that we talked about, the two safety teams. They're helping to intervene, intervene faster when these patients have these impulse control issues. We had a patient who, when they couldn't change the channel because three other patients were watching the channel, attacked the staff member just because they asked them to wait fifteen minutes till, till this show's over, the three other patients were watching and attacked the staff member over a TV control, over a channel. It's a kind of, uh, safety concerns that we face now with our patients. I, I want, I just want to let all of you know that we have an amazing staff with a very challenging patient population. We have an amazing staff. Miracles happen at this hospital every day that new, news media will never pick up. And I'm proud to be part of this team, I'm proud to be the CEO of this hospital that does miracles in this community of Lakewood. We have good people, your citizens, that live here and work here and make the difference in the lives of these patients, but they are increasingly getting more and more dangerous. And we have a commitment to try to figure this out together, but it's not easy.
Did, I have just one more question. Did you do an after-action report as to what happened with the individual just committed a murder in an adult family home? And I believe he was released, was he released from Western State, maybe I'm wrong, that he had, he had gone through the mental health system? He ended up in an adult family home in Oak Brook and he, and he killed an individual. Have you, have you looked at what, why he was out?
This is gonna sound very strange after all the coverage that was in the newspaper, but we as, as DSHS employees and Western State employees can't even say whether that person was a patient of ours or not. That's, that's the HIPAA law, I mean, that's how it is. If you were to call the hospital and say, "Is Kathy Spears a patient there?", they, they couldn't tell you.
Okay, okay then, I, I-
I'm sorry.
So HIPAA is a nice law and it's great to use as a government employee to, to not say, "Well,"
Well, it's-
"Too bad." And I, and I mean, Cheryl Strange-
It's not great to lose, I could be sued if, if I did.
Cheryl, Cheryl Strange literally just said, "Well, too bad." Yeah, you know, he died. But we don't have that luxury, right? I mean, there, it was a citizen of Lakewood, killed another citizen of Lakewood. And typically in this community, um, we take it as a seri- murder is a serious crime.
Absolutely.
So, and there was, the published reports were that this individual had a history of violence and he was in your hospital. And he was released. He then killed somebody. So, um, so then I'll ask the question, given that, that set of facts, why would anybody trust that your hospital is making proper decisions on the release of civil commitments?
Okay, well, let me, let me give you my best on that. First of all is, it is horrific, it is unacceptable that any per- person would be harmed in a, in a home or at our hospital. However, most of the data that research shows that mentally ill patients and mentally ill, ill individuals are more apt to be a victim of crime than a perpetrator of crime. That's what all the statistics show. We've had very successful, if you look at multiple states that release civil patients into the community, the percentage is very low of, um, of, of these types of cases that happen in the communities that were around us. And, and really, if, to focus on a few instances versus the success of many patients who have a right to go back into the community, I think we have to balance as a society, I'm very anxious in anticipation of the opportunity with the governor's budget, that we will have an opportunity to have some more secure facilities that allow us an opportunity to discharge patients into very safe and secure facilities. I look forward to those opportunities. I know we're advocating for that and I know that, that the governor and the legislature is trying to find the most appropriate opportunity for civil patients to go into the community. But we believe that, um, patients have, have not only the op- the right to go into the community, but that overall it's very successful integrating patients back into the community. It's pretty rare that these types of incidents happen and more often they get attacked than the other way around. They're usually the ones that are victims of crime rather than them perpetuating the crime. And that's what all of our, all the statistics that I have seen show.
Well, thank you, Ms. Barth.
Can I-
Oh, I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
Just, it'd, it'd be real quick, so, just one thing too, just to mention as far as the, um, before the patients get released, I don't think we've really talked about it, but they're on that ward and there's a treatment team of nurses, psychologists, psych- psychiatrists, mental health technicians. And they're all looking at what the risks are, uh, what, what brought the patient into the hospital. And so they're trying to, to mitigate those risks. So if it's the patient isn't complying with, um, medication and they, they see that they go down a bad road when they're not taking their meds, so they're working on that if there's some, uh, just issues in impulse control. So they're doing all these things to hopefully get that patient ready to discharge and to be successful and to not go down the road where they're, you know, killing somebody or, or, or even a danger to the community. But again, it's, it's that effort that they're doing. Can you guarantee that? But I just want it to be known that, as Dave mentioned, the good folks we have working at that hospital, they truly take it, you know, as a serious, um, it's serious for them. And so they don't want to release somebody that they don't believe isn't ready, so.
It's kind of like the task.
Is that whack-a-mole?
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
I would, I would just like to add that, um, our staff are citizens of the community and they want your community safe. They, we want the community safe, we live in this community, we work in this community. And it takes a, an incredible, incredible skill set. And we attract people who may not make the highest salaries, but they're the most committed to treating the sickest of the sickest Washingtonians. And we believe we have a stellar crew that every day comes to work with a commitment-
And we believe we have a stellar crew, that every day comes to work with a commitment to balance the needs of patients with public safety, and do an amazing job that we should honor and appreciate. I, I'm just proud to be part of this team. I think that, uh, as we move forward together, we will constantly monitor this discharge process. I'll come back as often as it takes to keep you up to date, and I'm a straight shooter, I'm gonna tell you the truth every time. And I, if I don't know the answer, I'm gonna find it, and I'm gonna get back to you and tell you the, tell you the answer. But I do know this, and that is, we want to be good partners. We care about this community, we intend to keep it safe, we will do everything in our power, every day, in my watch. I'm gonna honor this community, and be a good partner with you, and make sure that we do everything we can to keep this community safe. That's our commitment. My number one goal, when I came in as CEO of this hospital, I have it everywhere I go, it's on the top of my strategic plan, it's in everything I do, it's in the resources I brought with me tonight, is to keep you safe in the community, and to keep our staff and patients safe in that hospital. That's my number one goal. They take care of everything else, they take care of paperwork, I focus on safety. That's my commitment, it's important to me. When I, in my history in healthcare, I have thirty-five years of healthcare experience, I worked for, um, I did a, I retired from the federal government, I worked for the Department of Veterans Affairs for my entire career. I retired from California, where I served veterans there. We had some of the sickest veterans there, who had extremely high suicide rates. And it was my honor to work with veterans to try to reduce those suicide rates, coming back from military service, and not being able to adjust back into the society. And I took that same passion I have with protecting veteran, uh, veterans, with the same passion I have in protecting this community and our patients and our staff at the hospital. I commit to you as a CEO, I'm accountable to you, I'm accountable to our patients, I'm accountable to our staff, I'm accountable to this legislature. And I intend, in my watch, to do everything I can to keep this community safe, and that's my commitment. Patients will be treated, they will be ready to be successfully discharged, and we will make sure we do everything we can to protect the community, and protect the resources out there, and all the staff and patients, and, and this community members that live here in this good community of Lakewood. So that's my commitment to all of you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Ms. Barth?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say I do appreciate you all coming out tonight. I know it's probably an uncomfortable position to be in. We are getting a lot of pressure from our citizens to get answers, so I appreciate you coming out tonight. Couple of questions, is there a monetary incentive to adult family homes, businesses, to take more challenging, um, patients?
They can charge higher rates depending- They can charge higher rates depending on the services provided, there's kind of a base rate, and then as they become more sophisticated in their care, they do get paid, you know, for, depending on the medical condition, or a mental health condition, so.
So do you have an average, I mean, if you were just gonna say an average price for a difficult patient?
I have to tell you, I have no idea. No, it's, we, this is, Western State doesn't necessarily deal with that, that's all done through, um, the Medicaid, you know, what Medicaid covers.
I get that, but if you're the ones reviewing where these folks are going, I would think you would have a general idea what price-
Well, I think the key is, is what will Medicaid pay for? What, what services does the patient need to be able to, to live successfully in that adult family home? And will they be able to get enough Medicaid, or Medicare, to cover those expenses?
Okay.
Yeah.
What I would be very happy to do is to get more information on that, to provide to you. I know healthcare authority, the state pays the bills, um, long-term care and adult services, Alsa negotiates a lot of those rates between the adult family homes, other placements, and DSHS. I'm not involved in that direct, uh, relationship. I focus on our patients at our hospital, and there is a group that does focus on that, so I'd be happy to answer your question, I just can't answer that right now.
I would appreciate it, because what I've heard, I've heard the fifteen thousand dollars a month floated out there, um, as much as twenty thousand dollars a month as an incentive. I'd be interested to know if that is actually happening.
I believe that's open public information, that I'd be happy to get and provide to you.
I'd appreciate it if you could find it, because I haven't been able to yet.
Just don't holler with me.
Another thing that, um, and then I'll wrap it up, but, um, you talked about Western State having problems with this new type of patient. So if that's true, and it's a problem for you, and we're taking those patients, and we're putting them in adult family home businesses, how on earth are those folks even minutely equipped? If you can't handle them, how can these adult family homes that are near schools have kids walking by them every day? How are these people equipped to handle securities?
I would say that's a very good question. That's why I believe that we have a commitment, all the way up through the legislature, the governor, and DSHS, that there are going to be a certain number of civil patients that will never be able to be placed in traditional settings. So that is up to us to determine and figure out, what is those secure type of facilities going to look like? I'm very hopeful, in the governor's budget when it comes out, that we do, um, we will fund some types of secure facilities that will be able to take these types of patients. They won't be ending up in, in adult family homes, they cannot function in that type of a setting, it needs to be far more secure. We have an interest in getting our patients discharged into the community, that's the governor's vision, and it's the right thing to do. But we also believe in having it as secure as possible. So we agree with you on that. There are patients who cannot function in that setting, and so it is our job as a DSHS and as a hospital to figure out what type of secure facility can handle that type of patient, because they certainly would not belong in a, in an adult family home.
Can I just add to that? I just want to add to that, that when we talk about these patients, they're, this is how they are when they come into the hospital. And so they haven't had any treatment, they haven't had their, their substance use, um, issues dealt with, they haven't been properly medicated. And so the goal is, is to find the right treatment, um, mix of treatment, whether that's medication, and therapy, and whatever that is, and, uh, and help, and put them in a situation after they become stabilized, because people do recover from, from mental illness. And, um, so upon leaving, it's how long have they been able to follow the rules? How long have they been able to, you know, be involved in their therapy and their medication, and not refuse their medications? So there's a whole gamut of things that we look at, and, um, and then trying, you know, ensuring, this is the part that I think that, you know, is concerning to the community, is once they leave us, how do we ensure then that they continue with that medication? Continue with that therapy, and continue to follow, you know, the-
Precisely.
Yeah, yeah. And so, we, we do our best to provide wraparound support services, particularly for people who don't have a connection, and their family may have just said, I'm, I'm done, I'm not gonna deal with this person anymore, that's, that's not an uncommon, you know, attitude. So trying to, to get them hooked up to the BHOs with, um, people who are gonna come check on them, or call the hospital and say, you know what, we haven't seen Joe for the last two weeks, and he's had two appointments, and see if there's something that we can do to help find him, or get ahold of him and follow through. So wraparound services are really key to sustaining that recovery in the community.
To Mr. Holt's point, though, and I appreciate your commitment to security, not only of staff and patients, obviously, but to the community. With regard to your hope and vision for funding through the governor's anticipated budget for more secure facilities, is what I hear, for those patients who are just not cutting the mustard with regard to the civil commitment side, they're just not, they're not gonna get rehabilitated. I assume you would likewise support that those new facilities, if funded and constructed, not be located in residential zones?
Well, the governor, when he announced his vision for twenty twenty-three, indicated that he had the intention to spread those out across the state. And my anticipation, when I'm, uh, not speaking for him, but I would, uh, I would believe that the governor would assure that those are in locations where the general public is protected, et cetera, so.
You would support that as a CEO?
Absolutely support it, yeah. And I, and I believe we all have a common interest in there. We just met with, uh, NAMI today, Pierce County, and state officials for National Association for Mental Illness, and we're all in the same team, we all, we all struggle. This isn't just a Western State hospital, it's not just a city, it's a, it's a police department, it's a state, it's a national, it's a, it's a major crisis. And we all need to be part of fixing this, but one community, and I'm, and I know Lakewood feels similar to many other communities, can take all of that on themselves, and I believe the governor's vision is to spread that out. And to get patients closer to their homes, a civil commitment requires more of those secure facilities across the state, not here. Western State Hospital is here, we need to spread those out across the state, and that's what I believe the governor's vision is. I'm hopeful for the future, and I'm excited when he announces that sometime this week or next week, on the budget. I think you're all anticipating it, too.
With bated breath?
Thank you, and thank you very much for coming in and talking to us tonight, I, I don't envy you your task.
It's hard.
That said, you talk about open dialogue, you talk about building relationships, but you can't tell us much about the people who live in the community, whose security I, among my colleagues here, am also responsible for. You talk about the intentions of your staff, and I believe you. The way to hell is paved with good intentions, and we have people living in the Oak Brook area that can put people there in a heartbeat. The miracle you talk about, sir, is the miracle, when I wake up every morning, is somebody isn't dead in Oak Brook. The miracle is, is that we have people living in this city who have been patient. We have a city staff who has asked repeatedly for information. Could we have more than the information we've gotten? And you shake your head, no, and I understand, ma'am, why, but you have to understand my position as well. There are fifty-nine thousand people in this city who would like to know answers as to why, and Mr. Bokey touched on this, why fair share is not honored in this county. We are seven percent of the county's population, yet we have twenty-eight percent of the people in our adult family homes, and we don't know the extent of what some of those people have committed or done prior to them being placed in those adult family homes. How does that lead to building a relationship? How does that lead to open dialogue? I commend you, sir. You're a straight shooter, so am I. And it isn't to attack you, sir, that's not my point, but I want you carrying that message forward when you talk to a legislature that, yeah, and you used the word several times, hopefully we'll see something. Hope is not a method, and we don't want to wait two, or three, or four, or five years for the governor's grand plan to come together. Our elected officials from the twenty-eighth district to twenty-ninth district are very much on record as knowing, this council wants action this biennium. Well, neighbors, what about you? Thank you.
Can I just say thank you, I appreciate that.
I did, sir, thank you. And feel free to shoot back.
I also appreciate all of you coming and, 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 and talking with us about doing that. And I would say, you know, we have been interacting with a series of your predecessors, and with staff and folks, uh, both from the council to CEO, as well as, uh, some of our city staff with folks of yours, and that, uh, appreciate the fact that you're a part of DSHS, which is, I might as well say you're a part of the Department of Defense, okay, there's, you know, there's a lot, lots of, a lot of tentacles to be able to go and do that, and, 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 you know, and, and there are a lot of policies that come from a lot of different directions. I am concerned about the, the tw, vision for, vision twenty twenty-three, and the conversion of Western State to only handling forensic patients. Do you see yourself under pressure to attrit by discharge all of your civil patients in the next three years? You know, or do you envision that there are, you're, you're going to transfer all your civil pa, patients that aren't fully ready to be discharged elsewhere, or are you going to have a longer transition of where you're going to have to hang on to?
Let me, let me mention it, that you're exactly right. It's a lofty vision, but twenty twenty-three, we support that, but we all know we have some very complex patients that have very complex needs, and that's gonna take time. And those probably will still be on our campus for the long future, because we don't discharge somebody that's not ready to go out. So we will hold on to them, and tell there are secure facilities and locations where patients need to go, and there's not pressure. The pressure is on us to try to get ready as a hospital, to prepare for the forensic population to come, but we're gonna have a number of our civil patients that could take years to get placed. So we anticipate having two populations still. It could come more and more difficult to place, the longer we, you know, there are those that are ready right now, and that go out into, uh, that have dementia, that can move into a nursing facility when they're stable and ready to go. But there are many of our patients who are very complex, and this could take years. So we don't see in twenty twenty-three, all of our civil patients gone. We see very complex state patients, civil patients, staying at Western State Hospital for, for a, an extended period of time until we find secure enough facilities. There may be some that never leave. We probably will have a small section of civil patients that will probably remain there, because we can never place them. That's, so that's kind, does that help? We don't send somebody out, uh, unprepared and not ready for discharge, they stay until we have an appropriate place, or they don't leave.
I guess that what I hear you saying is that twenty twenty-three is not a bright line.
It's a target.
Uh, uh, where, where, it'll be over there. And I, and I, and I, and I noticed, we received a copy of what is a webpage that I'm, I'm not sure if it's yours, or if it's DSHS's webpage about you, um, that, but there's a little note down here in, in small print that talks about categorizing someone as forensic, that once you're a forensic patient, you're always a forensic patient, even if you've moved to a civil ward. At, at, at least statistically, I guess, is, is, is what it says here, is that, if you've ever been a forensic patient, you're a forensic patient, uh, uh, going on in there. And I'm, I'm trying to interpret that, but patients are counted as civil only if they had no forensic designation. And forensic patients are all patients that have a forensic designation at any point during the current episode. Here, it's easier to read on this, maybe. You know, and so, it, it does seem to me that in the new target of only having forensic patients as, but, but that the, Mr. Bokey's term was flips, that they'll continue to be- they'll continue to be considered by someone at DSHS as forensic patients and thus be the, in the target to be long-term residents at Western State Hospital. You know, I, you know, and, and your remarks kind of indicated that when, yet when a person is done being a forensic patient, they move to the civil side of the hospital. But if they're still going to be considered forensic, then we're still going to have them here. I, I, I guess that I would urge you as you are leading towards twenty-twenty-three, to try to get some clarity around that. So that it isn't that we have a situation where we say we only have forensic patients. But what we, what we've done is we've changed the definition and not particularly changed the, the category. The, 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 the way that that is worded is disturbing in that we can call people that way.
Yeah, and I'm not really sure why it's worded that way. If it's in regards to the forensic flips where they become eleven-fourteens after the forensic designation. So they, they may initially came in as a forensic patient. However, the charges were dropped and then they, they became a civil patient. But we still, as, as Dave mentioned earlier, our HP eleven-fourteen patients are still treated as a forensic patient, but they have a civil designation.
Still treated as a civil patient.
Yeah, civil patient, but they, they, they're on a hardened ward and, and there's enhanced security features for that, for that ward.
Well, definitions are important, Dan. Okay, and I, and I, and I would say, and that, and, and so it's, it's, it's important that they be clear, particularly if we're talking about we're going to change the mission, but if we're going to keep the same mission but change the definition, that, that, that's not, not helpful. One of the one of the public relations challenges that you have is I think we, I think even many in the community understand that there are many, many people every year that are well-served with the care and treatment that they get at Western State Hospital. The staff that you have, you know, really works to do a good job. That, uh, but there are a couple of things of that when, as Mr. Simpson said, the community is looking for answers in the the types of answers that we get that, that are somewhat, of some of your predecessors have been like a mantra. It's like, we don't place anybody anyplace. Patients choose where they want to go. That, um, yet the patients, when you ask, well, how many options was a patient given and did he get a chance to go and, 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 and look at them? Or who was his advocate in terms of doing this choosing? That then we get to say, well, we can't speak about any details like that, but the, but the impression is, is that it was a Medicaid person that went out and found a place that was willing to take a person. And that the choice that the person had was, well, you can stay in the hospital. You can can go here and, and the state will pay for it. You know, and I would hope that that's not entirely accurate, but that's the impression that it, that is giving when you, you interchangeably use we place, we facilitate, we let the person choose, and it's all supposed to mean the same thing. And, and, and the community then is concerned about, about doing that. There's also it seems that the hospital is the the entity that discharges someone. But there's, it's very, very unclear, and there's very little information when you look forward about a, who made the, the final decision to discharge someone? That, um, anecdotally, we hear from that practitioners, that there is sometimes disagreement amongst folks at the hospital about how ready is a person to be discharged, or with what parameters should there be. So there must be some process and ultimately someone, or maybe it's a committee that resolves those disagreements about being able to go and do that. That, um, with some other sorts of folks that we're concerned about, that, 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 there, there is a process that, that goes through, through the court, and there's at least some sort of, of a hearing, although it's not, not real open to do that. You know, I think that what it is that you need to look and seek a way to do is to speak to the community a little bit in a, in a way that reassures them about the processes. And it's hard to do that when you're talking about real individual specific cases. But what we haven't seen is we haven't seen an open, real thorough description about this is the process. I mean, you gave us a thumbnail scratch, sketch here today, but something more detailed that would build confidence would be, I think, helpful. As Mr. Simpson mentioned, we're working with our legislative team of trying to put forward some legislative things because the court told us to try to get the legislator, legislator folks to, 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 to do some things. To, to go forward and, uh, and, and, and do that. We don't do that as an adversarial thing with Western State. We're more, we, we, we tend to feel that our problem is with policies well above you that you're, that are imposed upon you. But, um, since we are going to be involved in a, in a we have, we have, we have a legislative agenda that, um, we would appreciate that if in places where what you feel is in the best interest of the hospital and of the patients at the hospital, that aligns with our agenda. If you would be a spokesman, whether you can be a spokesman openly, or whether you can be a spokesman internally within the channels of DSHS to, to do that. Because what we don't want to do is we just don't want to get involved with what our perception has been at some point in time, is that DSHS just digs in their heels and anything, that they're just not, not open to anything that wasn't their idea. Going through, 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 through to do that. I am glad to hear that, that we're, we're going to move forward with the master plan. I mean, Western State Hospital is a, a, a valued employer in, 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 in the city of Lakewood. Um, you know, you, you and although you, you mentioned that you wish you could pay people more than what they are, that you have some good family wage jobs that, that are there, being able to go and do that. You know, municipal governments across the state are, are, are concerned about a gray tsunami of losing a lot of people in, with, with a greater than, than, than regular turnover due to retirements going on. Is that a, a situation with, with your staff, or do people just not last long enough to get great?
We, we anticipate not shrinking at all with this conversion from civil to forensic, that we'll just be replacing civil patients with forensic patients. So we don't anticipate any economic change with this, just a substitution of jobs for the type of patient that they're working with. If you're concerned about, I just, if you're aware, we, we believe we have a long future ahead of us, the best future ahead of us, that if we can get this new hospital or not, either way, we're going to make this a great hospital. And that's my commitment, that we will be. But you, we see that just a switch of jobs from civil to forensic and not a downturn in jobs will actually grow or stay even and not impact the economic situation in Lakewood. I don't know if that answers your question there.
Well, I guess you think that the challenges you have with finding staff are not going to get worse by a wave of retirements? Is that what you're telling me?
We do struggle finding psychiatrists. We do struggle finding some of our hard-to-fill positions, but we believe that we can do this. We are looking at other types of providers such as advanced practice nurses to help supplement our psychiatrists when we have shortages. But we believe that we will be competitive and that we can attract the type of providers that we need.
Uh, I, you know, I appreciate your comments about rather than throwing money into buildings of, of getting a new hospital. But if that becomes the state's strategy, and, and I got the impression that patients, even when discharged, have strings back to the hospital providers call. You, you, there, there is, there is discussions to be able to go and do that. And that leads me to think that that has a consequence of more patients finding providers that are closer in proximity to the hospital than, than dispersed throughout the state. Now, is, was one new hospital the size of Western State? Is there not an option for several smaller new hospitals dispersed? I understand that that is a, that, 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 maybe, maybe one is cheaper, less expensive than the other. But if we're keep doing the same thing that we've been doing of having just two major hospitals in the state and expecting, though, all the other facilities that support these patients to be dispersed, but they all have to be, somehow have links to the hospitals to, to be able to go and do that. And I, you know, it's kind of like the college system. If you only had two universities, one on each end of the state, it we're, we're far better served by having lots of colleges and, and universities around to be able to, to go and do that. So it isn't just sixteen-bed places to go after you've been at the hospital, but if you disperse the hospitals, it would, it would lead to to being able to be able to go and do that.
Is that about it, Mike?
And then I guess I got one last, one last question to move on, and that has to do with y- y- your master plan and the campus. A number of years ago, one of your predecessors was here, and they had eight or nine tenants on the campus. That, you know, they're, 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 the, the campus is there, but, but there were, there were other organizations that had buildings and things to do that. It's told that that's been reduced significantly, but for instance, the Child Study and Treatment Center is not a part of the hospital, but it's on the campus?
It's a hospital under DSHS. We have three hot state hospitals in the state. We have the one in Medical Lake, Eastern State Hospital, Child Study Treatment Center, which is a children's hospital, and Western State. All three are DSHS.
In your relationship with that, is you are not the CEO of Child Study?
Correct. There is a separate CEO for theirs. His name's Rick Melman. I work very closely with him and also the Eastern State Hospital CEO. We partner on many initiatives across the state to, to assure that we have good hospitals on all three sites.
Okay. And are there some Department of Corrections activities located on the campus?
We do have a memo of understanding with the Department of Corrections, and so we do have a community corrections officer who is, uh, works closely with, um, a lot of our, our staff, including the discharge team also. And they, they provide input in various different things across the hospital. So if a patient has a DOC number, if they've been incarcerated or placed in prison at one point or, or another, they're still on some sort of active supervision. They're assigned a community corrections officer from the Department of Corrections that are, that it does work at Western State.
That's the extent of DOC on campus. Just that function.
Okay, thank you.
That's all. Ju- just a quick follow-up, and then I'll let Mr. Bokey have a, a point here. On the discharge process that you both spoke about, Kathy and is there some analysis as to whether there is the opportunity, capability, desirability to go back to the county of residence? I know that the stats you mentioned of the three twenty-two released in the last twelve or eighteen months, thirty-seven came to Pierce, seventeen from the thirty-seven into adult family homes in Pierce. But in the process itself, which is one of the questions involving trying to grapple, grapple with, is there some analysis about the fair share piece, sending them back to their home of record because it may be closer to family, at least they have more affiliation?
Absolutely. That, that would be a very, very first priority is to get them back to a situation that they're familiar with.
So is that part of the process?
That is part of the process, yes. Um, and, and we also, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into the discharge planning. Uh, the patient's family or friends or support group, um, sometimes is a part of the process in viewing different places to go and live. We take the, the patient, if the patient goes into an adult family home, for instance, and says, I, I don't want to be here. That's, they don't want to be there. We're not going to pursue that any, any further. So there's no, you know, we, we don't try to push them into anything, nor do we try to push an adult family home provider to take somebody that they don't feel they can care for, because that's not fair to the provider and it's not fair to the patient. So, yeah, there is a lot of work that goes into that.
And with regard to Mr. Brentstone's points, or about our legislative agenda, I don't know if you've received a copy of ours to receive and review the points we're trying to push with our legislators in the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. But if not, we can certainly get that to you.
We'd love to have that.
Yeah, and Secretary Strange, we should be able to get it directly to CEO if we can. I understand she's got that. We would look forward to whatever support you can provide at your level to encourage the secretary to help advocate for those changes that are responsible. Yes, Ms. Moss?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you all very much for coming out. We really appreciate it. I know that we are trying to work together as good stewards. We are there for you to help in any way we can. I have, most of my questions that I wrote down have been answered, so I won't go over them again, but how, tell me how an adult family home can end up with a Level One, a Level Two, and a Level Three sex offender. How do they qualify to get into a home?
I will need to provide, uh, track that information down for you and, and get it back to you. I'm not involved in that process. I take care of my hospital. I will get the information, however, for the discharge planning process with working with Alzheimer's and Healthcare Authority, DSHS, to, to get you that information. How is the best way to get that information to all of you?
Right through the city manager. Okay.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll give you the answers and provide a written documentation on how that process works.
And also, uh, when you talk about the new type of patients that you're receiving, how are you keeping your staff safe?
Well, it has been very challenging. And you've seen in the news where we've had some very challenging patients lately. Uh, Mr. Sutherland indicated to you that one of the ways we're doing that is we are enclosing all of our nurses' stations. If you go to a standard hospital, um, there's just a counter between the nursing staff and the patient. And we are going to enclose those all with, we call it polycarbonate and steel, where we allow pass-through windows. So a staff member working on a chart doesn't have to worry why they're working on the chart that somebody's going to jump over that counter. We had a couple of jumpers. I got them that jumped over, and one, oh, with a serious injury over the last few months. So, um, it's controversial. Some, much of the literature says if you enclose them up violently So it's controversial, some, much of the literature says if you enclose them, violence increases. That is not our experience. It's not my experience. I intend to keep the staff safe and have no jumpers. I'm enclosing all of those nurses' stations. So I've got capital money through DSHS, it's one of my top priorities. I said I want emergency funding. They gave us emergency funding all the way up through the governor's office and we're starting the process of enclosing all those nurses' stations. So that's one of the ways. We are working on the process of coming up with the potential of a specialized unit where we take our more violent patients, those who tend to assault more often or have the potential to do that, and place them on a separate ward with highly specialized and trained staff. It's been proposed and I'm waiting for approval that that possibly could be funded. That would allow us to let all the other wards, there are twenty-eight wards that are open right now, with about anywhere from twenty-four to thirty patients on each one of those, allow us to take, say that we track our top ten assaulters, our top twenty patients who are the most assaulted, and get them into some very high intensive treatment on one ward and allow the rest of the hospital to stay safe, where we're focusing on the treatment team needs of those specific patients. So that's another area that I'm proceeding with, that I'm trying to get funded. And I hope to have that approved so we can move forward with that. We have these two specialized teams that go, that are roving experts. One's called the PERT team and the other's called the VERD Violence Reduction Team that monitor the acuity on each ward every day. And they move their resources to support the nursing staff on the wards where we have the most potential for violence. It allows the nursing staff on that area to have some specialized expertise. Also, it sometimes provides a show of support. Where we're bringing in numbers, many of these patients have been in jails. And by bringing in numbers, it often will calm a patient down when they realize their odds. They've got much more support on the ward to allow them to de-escalate those types of patients. So we spend a lot of time on this advanced training that we're rolling out, advanced techniques on de-escalating patients, on how to say no without saying no. Oregon State Hospital had a very successful pilot on that that we're trying to bring back here where we teach our staff and coach our staff on how to give choices to staff. Maybe you can't change the channel now, but you could do this instead of no. And then you get a hit in the face. Offering other mechanisms of training our staff to help deal with some of these very, very complicated cases of very low impulse control. So that's another tool that we're working on. We are hiring some specialized support staff that can help us train the staff. So we're asking for more training staff. Another thing I'm doing is I'm expanding our NEO, our new employee orientation. Right now, we have a week-long new employee orientation. I am going to expand that to a five-week. Our patient, our staff, some of them come right off the streets. They have a high school education that are on our floor. And they, we wanna treat, talk to them about mental health conditions, what to watch for, give them practice, more practice before we put them out on a ward where they're gonna get hit. Help them understand what triggers are, their own triggers. Some people are used to responding. Somebody swears at you and cusses at you and gets you in your face and they do the same thing. We have to teach them how. This is a patient. He has, he or she has impulse control. You have to be the mature person in the room and back off and allow them space. So a lot of those types of things that we're gonna work on. So advanced training, increase our new employee orientation to five weeks, from one to five weeks. Give them more skills so that they can deal with these more complex, changing patients that they're realizing, they've asked us for that training. They said, "Hey, we got this new type of patient. They're highly assaulted. They're impulsive. Give us more training." We're doing that. The other thing that we're doing is we're doing the training on the shift of the staff. So then when we have a night shift, we're getting the staff on the night shift so we can help support them on the shift that they're working and get them the skills and the tools that they need to get them trained to be able to safely de-escalate these patients. So combination of multiple things, physical barriers. We're getting a few more, getting more cameras. Some of our wards that we have are designed in horseshoes. You can't see around corners. So we're getting more mirrors, we're getting more cameras. Trying to give the staff the tools they need to be safer on the types of wards in the physical plant that we have right now. So I think those will help.
Yeah. Well, whether they're civil or forensic, why are they allowed to harm themselves or others? Why are they allowed to roam like that?
Why are they allowed to roam?
I mean, you, they're not pinned down. I don't know how you operate with someone that could be violent. And I'm on that floor, I'm gonna be extremely careful to the point that I might protect myself before. So how are you going to, how can you manage that?
Well, we train our staff. Let me give you an example. So we have a shift change between each shift where the behaviors of each patient are addressed to transfer to the next shift so they know what to watch for. So today, on day shift, a patient is starting to escalate. We transition that information over to the swing shift and then we translate that over to the night shift so we can watch for consistent patterns across all three shifts. It's very difficult. We have experimented with one-to-ones where we have one patient on one very difficult patient. But that gets them too close and sometimes they get hit. So we're working on something right now that I call a village or million management, where we're trying to get an entire team, not just nursing staff, but all of our staff at key times during the day when movement is happening and when patients are close together, spatial issues. Like at dinnertime when they're lined up to get food, they get too close to each other. We're trying to get more staff at those key times to help space the patients out, to help deal with some of those types of million management. So we are doing a full-court press. We're trying anything and everything. We're welcome to, looking for ideas from anyone and everyone that can help us to help manage this. We're looking for best practices across the country. We've gone to our whipship partners across the United States. They're struggling in how to deal with this and trying to learn best practices from them. Coaches seem to be a good idea, to get coaches to help staff when they see good work happening to coach others on the ward, how to do those same good things. And when things aren't so, said so well, that they can coach them on how to say something better. But it takes a whole team, a whole village to, because you're absolutely right. This is hard. It's hard stuff.
Well, thank you very much and good luck.
Yes. Thank you so much.
One last question for Mr. Bokey and then we'll...
Well, I have a comment and actually a couple, I think, short, quick questions. My comment is that, you know, when I walk through the campus, because I live near there, it's clear that we have under-invested in the buildings. It really is a museum piece when you walk through, which is great for a museum, but not good for a hospital. And, you know, my day job, I have some contact with that. We have systematically under-invested in mental health care. And I can't speak for other states, but I can speak for this state for decades. This is a multi-generational, you know, pox on, on otherwise well-meaning elected officials who believe that under-investing in mental health is okay. And that under-investing in sick people is okay. And, you know, I think it really is a shame on our state for treating people so poorly. And then at the end, treating our employees really poorly. And I know that they haven't been paid, I guess they got a raise last time, but, you know, they just haven't gotten paid all that well. So, you know, I understand it's, and we're all for improving the situation out there. So a couple of things. Does this forensic thing also, is it the same for Eastern State?
Yes, Eastern State has forensics as well.
So, and are they going completely forensic too?
Correct. The same target that the governor gave Western State Hospital is the same target for Eastern State Hospital. Both are being converted.
And then I'll give you a chance at hope. Are there improvements in drugs and therapy that are occurring now or on the horizon that will improve the situation for these people and give the general public the, a little bit more confidence in this system? Because I still think that, you know, I was reading something about antidepressants and they're hopeful on some types of new therapies that, because a lot of, you know, some drugs are just, don't work for some people. So I'll leave you with that question.
I'm not a physician, but I will say that there is hope with drugs. Let me tell you what we do for medication management at the hospital. We have an exceptional pharmacy. For those who are familiar with pharmacists, they counsel with our physicians, our psychiatrists, all the time. And they are sharp and they understand medications. And they counsel and advise and bring best practices in medical management of patients from all over the country. We get some of the best pharmacists that you can buy. And together, we have constantly monitoring the titration of medications. We, as part of the safety plan, you asked about our safety plan. That's the other piece I did not mention is we are constantly assessing if we can do better in medication management. Our new chief, Chief Medical Officer named Dr. Catherine Raymer, who comes out of Seattle and also has an extensive academic background and research, is bringing a series of consultants in for pharmacy medications to help bring in best practices outside of even her expertise to try to make this better. Where, so we, the answer, short answer to that is yes. Medication management is critical. There is hope. We, we would like to continue to partner with U-Dub, who has some of the best and the brightest in academic medicine and research in medication management in the mentally ill. And she is constantly working with U-Dub to try to help us partner with them and to bring about the best new practices and the best medications that there are in the industry. So we stay on top of the best medications. We're constantly monitoring. It's one of our top safety initiatives is to make sure that our docs have all the tools in their toolkit for medication management to allow us to maintain, to monitor and to control our, not control, but to medicate our patients to the point that allows a maximum freedom, as well as maximum treatment potential.
Well, thank you very much. And just to recap and cap up tonight's session, we wanna thank you for coming. I know it's been a good spirited discussion and you've invested a lot of time with us. And we appreciate that. I assume our community policing program is serving your needs well?
Let me close with that, first thanking you for allowing us to come. And I'd come back as often, I don't know how often you'd like us to come back. I would like to be a good steward and be back to report on a regular basis to you on how we're doing. The community policing program, I think, has been one of the most successful areas of collaboration and partnership that we've had here and is a model. Chief Zaro, working with Dan and our former Chief of Safety and Security, Sean Murphy, put that program together. It's extremely successful. We constantly will up your funding for that program. I know it's a legislative process that you submit. We also budget for it and it's worth every penny. We appreciate the officers that are assigned to our facility who are exceptional. We have investigators and officers who are pinpointed specifically for our hospital that have relationships with our security force, our patients and our staff. That's exceptional. And we appreciate that from this. Thank you to the City of Lakewood for that great program that's working for us.
You're welcome.
And it's keeping you even safer. We're all working together to partner to keep it safe.
We're gonna keep the budget sustained and perhaps make it permanent. That's what would be our purpose. Last, last comment. I wanna take you up on your invitation for a tour. So I don't know if we can facilitate that. Yeah, well, if we can do it, and I know this is a good time to do it because it could be under the auspices of just learning more, integrating, having this collaborative approach. But also as part of the master planning process, might be helpful to get maybe a group of us to go on a tour, if we can do that. Kind of take a look at the facility, get a sense of what the master planning may look like. And that way, Mr. Buwer can educate us as well a little bit about it. He's our key planning guru, is our Assistant City Manager for Community Development.
We work very closely with him and we have a great relationship. We'd love to do that. We'll take you in a shuttle bus around to see all of the projects and the master plan and then take you in some wards. Let you see what a forensic ward versus a civil side of the house looks like. We'd love to do that.
Elevators built before nineteen sixty.
We hope you enjoy that.
We will coordinate this with you within the next few months. So we don't let too much time pass.
That coin symbolizes our permanency in this community, that we have a bright future and a great opportunity to continue to partner with you. And thank you for welcoming us.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you all. So why don't we take a five-minute break for all of us so we can get up and stretch before we go to the next item on our agenda, which will be a review of the third quarter financial report. financial report. All right, if we can come on back so we can get rolling here. I'll even give you a kiss there, Mr. Simpson. Chocolate kiss. All right, so we will get back here and for purposes of, uh, kind of gaming the rest of the evening so we don't wear ourselves out. Ms. Kraus promises that she can get her review of the third quarter financial report within about, uh, five to ten, no more than fifteen minutes. So we'll plan on that to go to by no later than nine fifteen, nine-ten with her. Then we'll go to the special events update, which I don't think should take much longer than about twenty minutes. We'll spend more time on the Colonial Center update, which might take twenty. And then we are going to have an executive session later on tonight. So, yeah. So let's, let's be mindful of our time here. And with that, we'll go to the review of the third quarter financial report. It is now ten to nine. Yep.
Okay, so for the third.
Yeah, I, I, I would say that I noticed that the financial report in, in reading through it is both a financial report and an update on performance measures. And I think that maybe performance measures could be deferred to, to another time since that would be better done with more department heads available to ask questions to than, than what is there. So I think if we could defer that as part of the discussion.
Is that going to be part of your commentary tonight? Are you giving a thirty thousand foot overview or?
Thirty thousand foot overview. And actually, what I was going to focus more on was where I anticipate that we will be at the end of the year. We do have some revenues coming in, um, through November. There are just some revenues that we won't know until end of February.
Give us the good, the boundy ugly.
So actually, we're going to start off with some, uh, good information. So what you're seeing for the year-to-date actual is we're seeing revenues up by one point three million dollars. And in my analysis, pulling up the different revenues where we are year-to-date, projecting out, looking at five-year trends, and where I anticipate will be is I think we're going to come pretty close to between the one point one and one point three million dollar range on the revenues exceeding the year-to, uh, the year-end estimate.
For this year?
Yes. And some of the areas that we're seeing some increases are, is in the sales tax. That could be anywhere from the five hundred and sixty-four thousand as more of a conservative range.
Give us a page so we can follow along with you.
Uh, page. It's the page, yeah, page six. So right now, we're seeing sales tax at five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars above the year-to-date. By year-end, we could be anywhere between five hundred and sixty-four thousand and six hundred and seventy thousand.
That's because my kids were home that weekend.
But I, I, so part of the sales tax is, um, if you recall the Marketplace Fairness Act, we had started receiving that since the first quarter. So part of the increase, we've received about eighty-four thousand dollars in Marketplace Fairness and we still have one more quarter to go. So AWC estimated about eighty-four thousand.
That's the online stuff?
Yes. Um, eighty-four thousand and I think we're going to come in more close to a hundred and thirteen thousand. So, so we're do, we'll do better than their estimates. The other sales tax that we receive, the parks and the criminal justice sales tax, those are countywide and, um, we're anticipating, or at least I'm anticipating, that we should be seeing increases on the park side of an additional twenty-seven thousand dollars over the year-end estimate, as well as the criminal justice at fifty-two thousand dollars. Our utility tax, I estimated low because we had been seeing a downward trend in the revenues, but if I look out, um, based on where we are today, we could end up with forty-five thousand dollars more than the year-end estimate.
An utility tax line?
Yeah. So the utility tax, however, is not coming in quite as strong. We're down by a hundred and ninety-eight thousand and that's really in our energy and cable, as well as the land and cell phones. So land and cell phone lines, we've seen that to be a trend. The cable side, I believe there's just a lot of different options. Um, you know, there's one being just the YouTube stuff. You can watch a lot on there and we just need colder weather to make up for it. So by year-end, we could be looking at about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars below the estimate. And I just did not estimate, uh, it going quite as low in the year-end side. However.
When, in the budget for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty that we passed, we actually looked at the estimate that we're not going to meet and projected another seventy or eighty thousand dollars a year in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty. So is, uh, is that twenty nineteen, twenty twenty estimate for utility tax, um, flawed?
Well, so what we'll have, when we do a two-year budget cycle, we have the mid-biennium. We'll, we'll, I'll be doing a comprehensive review. And if it looks like after the first six months, we're still seeing a downward trend, I'll likely adjust those revenues down and then see where we can pick up other types of revenues if they are increasing at that point. So to offset some of this utility tax, we are seeing an increase in the gambling tax. We, and it's just purely just activity at one of the card rooms has really picked up and then there was a sh, a shifting, uh, gambling tax amongst the two other, um, establishments. So if gambling tax comes in at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars more, that'll help substantially offset some of the utility tax. And then, you know, the criminal justice sales tax going up as well will offset that. So that'll be, uh, covered through those other revenue increases. The permits and fees for community and economic development, um, conservatively, up by two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. Um, they do have some increases on the expenditure side, so those revenues are helping to offset that.
Are we beginning to see a decrease in activity? And I don't know what page that's on where you break, break it down by building permit fees, zoning and development and plan review, plan check. Is there any trends that we should be concerned about in there?
Well, so I just looked at it through November and through November, we're up by four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars when we take a look at the trends. So those revenues are coming in pretty high. Yes. Yes, some negative months. And we just, um, in November, I believe it's October, November, we had, um, quite a huge jump in the building permits. Yeah. But I would not go with the four hundred and fifty-six thousand just to be conservative. I'd rather stick to the three hundred thousand. Um, also, our public works permits and fees by year-end, I'm anticipating that to be increased by sixteen thousand dollars. And that's just due to the efforts of our public works department in capturing right-of-way activity and, um, and you've seen that through the city manager's updates. Um, I have an update, uh, and then also on business license because now we've gone to this date, we are starting to see the business license revenues, um, come in. And, um, I believe our Community and Economic Development Director, ACM Buwer, had anticipated that'll occur next year. We are starting to see some of those revenue increases. So by year-end, I'm anticipating about a thirteen thousand dollar increase over the year-end estimate. Uh, I think so. People are, you know, one-stop shopping seems to be working, is my guess. So, uh, for the first few quarters or couple of quarters, I'd reported that alarm permits and fees were down. And actually, we did some research and, um, talked to the company and it's there, so we used to contract with ATB and ATB back in two thousand and eleven was bought out by PMM is what they call it. And they did some data transition earlier this year and were unable to reconcile the data. And they just completed it in July two thousand and eighteen and were able to capture a lot of the major businesses. Some of those major businesses, um, include like ADT, which had an outstanding balance of twenty-eight thousand, um, Comcast of nineteen thousand and, um, Protection One and Custom Securities. So there was about sixty thousand in outstanding receivables. So through October, our revenues are eighty-eight thousand and I had anticipated about thirty thousand until we figured out what was going on with this. So we are anticipating to be closer to the hundred thousand dollar range. So that's about another seventy thousand, sixty-five to seventy thousand dollars that will be, um, captured. And state shared revenues, the one area that we're not quite seeing an increase in or not meeting projections is the, um, criminal justice for high crime. We're not receiving at the same level that we had been receiving. And I don't have enough detail to determine if it's certain areas that we're not meeting or if we're just not meeting any criteria at all and just receiving the base, um, criminal justice funding. Fines and forfeitures for municipal court, um, we have received the twelve months at this point. What we don't have is our accruals for our accounts receivables. We get those from the state. That doesn't come in until January, February timeline, but based on what I'm seeing today, will come in at about fifty thousand dollars under, um, before any types of adjustments for receivables. Fines and forfeitures for camera infractions are anticipated to be a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars above what we had anticipate, anticipated. So we're about eight hundred and fifty-three thousand. We had anticipated seven hundred thousand and the vendor fees are coming in on target at three hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Seems like we should put up a few more cameras and lessen the court staff.
Is there a way to assign a value to the work done by the work crew since we did, took some actions that would, uh, generate more work crew hours? And if, is, is there some value there that's offsetting the decrease in fines and forfeitures that the, that, that might be analyzed and reported next quarter?
You know, that's something that I would have to talk to potentially the judge or the chief about. I'm not sure how those values are assigned and how the whole work crews. I know it wants to.
It's an in-kind, not a cash thing, so it doesn't fit here, but it, but if it compensates for this, you know, that's, that's helpful.
Yeah, we could take a look at it. And then lastly, on our miscellaneous interest and other, I am anticipating that will be about eighty thousand dollars above the year-end estimate and thirty-five thousand of that is coming from missile, uh, interest earnings. And then the other portion is coming from penalties, monies that we receive through the state distribution. So at the kind of conservative end, about one point one million dollars on the revenue side, potentially one point three million. Um, on the expenditure side, I have to just be very forthcoming with this. I did a fat finger thing and I added a extra digit to the city manager's office. And so city, uh, and this is on page four. So city manager, I'm showing that it's a hundred and forty-seven thousand. I added an extra one. It's really forty-seven thousand dollars.
I thought that was a car allowance.
And so, um, in terms of where I'm anticipating will be on the, um, expenditure side, I think what we're showing here of about a two hundred and forty-five thousand expenditure savings is in line with what I'm anticipating by year-end. And that's really just taking a look at where we are through November, um, the best that I could, given some of the information is not in the system and projecting out salaries and benefits, I believe will be in, under at about two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So this report here is fairly accurate with what I believe, where we will be at year-end. So that is on the general and street fund side. On the capital side, transportation benefit district revenues, I had anticipated eight hundred and fourteen thousand. And by year-end, just taking a look at where we have been in December two thousand and sixteen and seventeen, potentially twenty-three thousand dollars that could be applied towards capital projects above our estimates. And then real estate excise tax, it's still been a lot of activity. And through two thousand and eighteen, I'm just plugging in a number for December based on where we, what we've actually collected over the last five years, that could be an additional two hundred and eleven thousand. So for a total of two hundred and thirty thousand, that could go over to capital if we're taking a look at how we're doing. Um, the, this is, uh, on, let's see, page forty-eight of the page that says Q three two thousand and eighteen. So forty-three for the real estate excise tax, but that's just activity through September. Since this report was published, I do have information that came in as recent as today on the activity for October and November.
Remind me again on the ending fund balance, I'm looking at that page six where we're talking about the operating income, does that end up being just a carry forward? Because we've already taken into consideration the fact that we got our ending fund balance, which remains healthy. This is in addition to that, right? This would be?
Yeah, but we do have to be, um, you know, some of the, so right now, I'm showing that we have about a twelve million dollar ending fund balance in the general and street fund. And we're anticipating, um, ten point, uh, three million at a year-to-date. And so by the end of the year, we'll really need to have five point, about five point eight million dollars to go into the, um, budget for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. But remember, there's still one quarters of activity that still needs to go into here. Sure. So the real estate excise tax, let me switch back to that page. Yeah. So real estate excise tax through third quarter is up by three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Um, but with the latest information, um, by the time we get to year-end, I'm anticipating that we will have, uh, an additional two hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
Beyond?
Beyond, yes.
The budget?
Yes.
Which was two million?
Yes.
So it should be how much then? Two hundred and, two million? Two hundred thousand roughly?
Yes. Yes, two hundred thousand. A fund balance analysis? Um, for the real estate excise tax, we pretty much spent two thousand and eighteen's. Yeah. And two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty. Well, for a lot of capital projects, so.
In the budget?
Yes, in the budget. But again, you know, this is just very preliminary numbers and I'll continue to be watching it. And then shortly after we do the fourth quarter report, we get right into the, um, another six-year financial forecast and then get right into the mid-biennium budget adjustment. So some of the things where you're seeing some, um, decreases and some increases, we'll do some type of balancing, um, if it's realistic. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Kraus? Thank you very much, very timely. We now turn to the special events update and for this we have Sally Martinez. There she comes. There she comes. Good evening.
Oh, what fun.
No, it's Sally, Sally.
Okay, got it. Good evening. I'm presenting tonight on the special events. But first of all, I just want to thank you also much for not only being behind the concept and agreeing that they should move forward, but being there and being present and not just in a way that you're standing around, but being in the parade and running in the races. And everyone is always so supportive and it's just incredibly meaningful to see you all out there. So thank you for that. This wasn't in the packet that you got, but I just had to put it in. And I just want to kick off with this because, I mean, what a great photo. And it just captures the whole night. It captures the brilliance of the tree and the spirit of the event. I know it was funny that the Grinch kind of stole Santa's role there. I mean, he was so popular.
There were people out there. I was out there quite a bit later.
For hours. So he was from a Boy Scout troop. And he was in today and saying how great it was and that he just wanted to come back again. Oh, for sure, for sure. I heard every parking lot, all the back of Barnes and Noble, every lot was full. But that's a good point. So the Arts Commission, it was their idea. And it's, I feel like it's my role just to support what they want to do, be open-minded. And I know just from the past that no matter what I think, I always learn something from just going with the process. And they put it before you, I think in January. And, you know, it was kind of like, well, I'm not sure, but you gave it the go. So thank you for being open-minded. And they proved that it really, it was a very kind of a relaxing day, I felt, as opposed to being so rushed on Friday. You know, it kind of ebbed and flowed and people moved in and moved out. Right. And it rained so hard the next day, but no, even the weather cooperated. It was liquid at its best. Here's Santa. This was a new twist, having Santa and Mrs. Claus come through. I just got a call out of the blue. They sent a picture. I said, sure. We have a Santa though, so just keep driving. So they did. They just kept driving home. And, you know, the police were incredible. It wasn't a straightforward process. We probably went through four or five different iterations of the parade route, how the police should lead it. They researched the Daffodil Parade. They found out what they did to keep the people safe, how they staged it. Should we do a rolling closure? Should we do a solid closure? And in the end, we decided on really closing the street down. My worry was that no one was going to be out there, but apparently they were lining Gravely Lake Drive. Here is an action, just a few clips. Not everyone got to see this, so I just wanted to. Oh, oh, you were in the parade. So maybe you didn't get to see this either because you were in the parade. It's the first year the military's kept forward to get involved. So it's been amazing. And. Oh, they volunteered to come out on the street. Yes. Oh, they didn't have any? Oh, 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 you're okay. We had some beauty. And then I just. So I wanted to, I don't want to spend too much time on that. But the Jingle Ball Rock Fund Run also moved to the city. We weren't sure how that was going to go. The feedback's been great. I think we can make some improvements, getting people out to cheer. But when I put on events, I'm always very conscientious about the cost. I want to have a good return on our investment. And I try to be very frugal and resourceful. And one thing that just kills me is the medals. They cost a ton of money and, you know, they hang on someone's wall or they go in someone's drawer. So I said, let's do an ornament this year. So you can take one and, let's see, one, two, three. Take one and pass them along. Yes, they did. Now, these I made, they don't actually have anything about the run. The run said finish your medal and the information, it had the logos. And then this is just for the city. So I don't know if you saw these, but. So strictly from a marketing standpoint, I also, I also think of, so this was three ninety-nine. It retails for twelve ninety-nine. It has our logo on the back. It'll stick around. In terms of marketing, I always think, okay, if this was my business, how would I market it? How would I keep it top of mind for people? And this is it. It'll be around forever on someone's tree. And those are for you to keep, of course. But that was a big hit and that just turned out great. It just happened that I came up with the idea, but Todd Wolf from Roby's Cameras on the commission, he said, hey, we can make those. So I wanted to talk, kind of just segue into the banners and then we'll go back to the events because we've made some movement on those. And we did have our holiday banners. So just a quick recap of phase one, we did the military banner, the healthy and vibrant community in the international district. They turned out beautifully and they are up. Phase two, we were kind of out with the old and with the new. I gave an example of the Summer Fest, the old banner and the new banner. We have a series of them, which were these. And those were out this summer to highlight Summer Fest. These were our previous holiday banners and our new ones are out. They're in some of the photos from the tree lighting. But these are our new banners. Very consistent, very bright, very classy. I am really excited about these. The business district banners were very tricky. I kept getting clip art. It was just very hard. I finally went in, I met with them and I just picked out the pictures and we decided on the wording. And we chose quality dining. I really tried to focus on what actually happens in our town center. The shopping, the coffee shops, bookstores, the networking that can take place. We have a lot of fitness outfits and quality service and entertainment. And so hopefully that speaks to, I'll just go back to what we offer in our business district. Those will go along what we've identified as kind of the business district area, a lot of a hundredth, down a hundredth. And the places that actually have light poles where we can hang them. And then we have our new lifestyle banners. Again, I'm really excited about these. It's highlighting Lakewood's natural resources, which from a marketing standpoint, that is really what we have going for us. We've got the golf, the lakes, hiking, biking. We try to really use all different ages in this and different ethnicities. So we use some great words, discover, relax, welcome, play and explore. So those have been made and those will be going up soon. So we're going to hit on Summer Fest, twenty-three year tradition. Oh my gosh, we had the largest attendance ever. Forty-five thousand people, up from thirty last year, fifteen the year before and seven to eight before that. So it just continues to grow. We have a car counter. And so the car counter broke last year. So I guesstimated it was thirty thousand. This year it didn't break, but it only does do one entrance. I guesstimated three people per car and didn't even count the other entrance. I think they started at ten and, you know, people started coming in at six AM. So that was, that's how we came up with that. It was exciting because I thought, oh, we can't do that again. It's definitely at that point where parking's, you know, I spent a lot of my time out there just doing traffic. And, and yes, it's traffic and traffic control and parking is going to be our next. But, you know, it's, it's very manageable and easy to address. That, that would be a great fix. Mary, do you mind moving that chair just off to the side? Oh, I can look here. Sorry, never mind. So the marketing and brand, so how has it grown? Strategically, I believe it's a three-fold format for why it's grown. One is really putting genuine intention into this event. A genuine thought behind everything that we do to make it the best quality event for families. Posters that pop, so in terms of marketing, the radio ads, TV commercials. I don't know that everyone sees all of those. I know I don't see the TV commercials, but they're out there. And creating a really distinct look and feel. And then really diversifying. For marketing, to me, it's diversify, diversify, diversify. Don't just do publications. Don't just do radio ads. Do it all. And, and that strategy has really worked. I loved this. So Bryn's been great about doing our Facebook and our social media. So we know that a hundred and eighty-eight thousand people were reached through our Facebook. And for Taste Tacoma, it was so much less. It was just shocking. So, and eleven thousand people were interested. Taste Tacoma, three point seven thousand were interested. So that just shows kind of how we're surpassing. Yeah, yeah. And I like how it shows down the corner. It shows that twenty-five to, women twenty-five to thirty-four were thirty-three percent of those. So it's kind of young families. It really is. So again, going back to the return on the investment, how can we market it and, and not pay anything? Well, this was a great partnership with the schools where we gave them the logo and they, the schools, the students painted the rocks and then they went out and hit them. So we kind of created all this hype around something that they could do. And I, we had people finding them all over the place, all over the city. So secondly is being strategic about the sponsors. So we had our highest presenting sponsor ever and that was CHI and they came in higher than BMW. So what is strategic? It's really sponsors that have their own huge group of constituents and stakeholders that they can reach out to that maybe we can't necessarily. And then making sure that they do reach out to them. Making sure they have genuine buy-in and offering them a really quality package. And then having engaged invested partners. That's the third piece. So we have well over sixty partners and that jumped up on our passport to sports and arts. But they had a real value, which I calculated to be about thirteen thousand dollars for what they offer when they come in, whether it's in-kind or monetarily. Partners for Parks puts on such a classy car show. It's always so fun to see. And Sister Cities has really stepped up with the International Festival and using that second stage to attract people of all cultures. And it's just, it's a beautiful sight to see. So we know that five percent came from outside the fifty-mile radius. Based on our, we do the waivers. So when they get a passport, they have to fill out a waiver. And that's something new that we implemented just to try to get some idea of who, who are these people that are here? It's, it's a waiver. It says, it asks for their zip code. So it asks for this, asks for the specific things that I need for the lodging tax. So how many people and their zip code are the primary things I try to get. And it has a liability waiver on it as well and then they initial it. So it kind of kills two birds with one stone. Because I, I wanted to get some count because we don't sell tickets. So this is our best way of doing. So in order to get a passport, they have to sign it and then they get a bracelet. So we know anyone with a bracelet, sign the waiver. So the triathlon was great this year and by that I mean it was safe. No one got injured. Everyone had a good time. We had a hundred and ninety participants. We know that ten were from out of state, twenty-nine from outside the fifty-mile radius. And that it generated an economic impact of over eleven thousand. Who was that? Oh, really? And then, of course, we've added on the ten K, five K and one mile run. So we're really targeting all different athletes. And this run, Forrest Run, it was a Forrest Gump run where they wore their beards. It's really fun.
So the hundred and ninety to the triathlon, higher, lower?
Lower, lower. Trending, everyone I talked to, the numbers are really down for the triathlons. Most, a majority have stopped doing them altogether. So it'll be really interesting to see this year. I think maybe as more and more fall off, that there's so few left that will do well. And what is that? Is that a?
It's twelve K.
Twelve K. Mm-hmm. Hoop Fest, yes, I'm aware of that. I would, I want that. I want that. I want a big run like that. Yes. And you make a lot of money. Triathlons are expensive, very expensive. And that's why most of them are, are choosing not to, you know, we're fortunate with the city. We have the police department and we have all this support. So these are the food trucks. We had twenty-six food booths. That should say twenty eighteen. And seventeen in twenty seventeen. So the highest grossing truck was over ten thousand dollars. They were very pleased. So I had too few food trucks the year before last and a few too many this year. So I'll find a nice balance this year. Just because it was hard to know the numbers for me. I didn't want to have the long lines like we had last year. You literally couldn't get food. And then I kind of went over. There were probably three food vendors that didn't do so well, so I can cut back. Because I want everyone there to do really well. So what I want, what we all hope, is that people walk away from the event saying, I was inspired. So we brought in these great extreme athletes to inspire people. And then we want them to say, I tried something new. And so we've got the trapeze there, something high-flying and fun. I, I want to stay strong. And this is all, these are items on the passport to sports. My new passion is soccer. We were hoping people walk away saying, wow. We were hoping people walk away saying, wow, I didn't do that sport before and I love it. This is new to me, but I can do it. I've never cooked, kicked a football. I golfed for the first time. Hey, I got this, mom, I got this dad, I'm gonna do this sport when I grow up. And what I learned is the teens favorite is bubble soccer. And I've worked really, really hard to find things to attract teens that are fun and wholesome. I worked hard to get volleyball. It is trending, it's what all the teens are doing now, all the youth. Yes, it did, you know, it was tennis with us and now it's volleyball. And sure enough, they came through Pacific Northwest Volleyball. It's the big, big club. And it was so cool. They brought their big volleyball net and then they had a small one for youth. They brought out their teams. Yeah, yeah. I thought it's sand volleyball would be really fun. So lots, lots of potential to bring in a whole new crowd with the volleyball. And their feedback was they loved it and they did very well. This year's wow factor, I'm always looking for that, was a local motocross celeb who does aerial stunts. He was amazing, I could barely watch it, I just about had a heart attack. But it really attracted people of, of all genders and ages. We had our third annual Lego building contest to highlight kids creativity. There's something for everyone, from riding ponies to just really great family bonding time in the end of the day. Moving on to the farmer's market, it was our seventh farmer's market. We rocked it. Sales were up forty percent, up to over two hundred thousand for our vendors, which I love to see. That's what we wanna see. That's strictly a result of marketing, coming up with our farmer's market bags that we distribute, getting the word out, helping people break that habit of going to the grocery store. Yeah, I have a closet. And more and more that how we're trying to get rid of single-use plastics. They're great. So lunch in Lakewood was kind of a phrase we coined. What's new, we had vegan food, we had baked goods, tamales and frozen yogurt. We had a new ice cream vendor, really high quality. We had another winery want to join, so now we're up to four wineries. They are, do very well. We had this great, just what I'm always looking for in a vendor, the olive branch. They looked like they're right out of Tuscany, beautiful display, beautiful olive oil and vinegars. We had children's clothing and Hojo pottery, so clay. And then we added a children's craft curriculum with the interns I get from UPS. Again, I get two full-time amazing students. They save so much time by being out there, working eight hours a day throughout the summer. They create the curriculum. And we know that we had two hundred and fifty kids in a day coming through. And that's a real change. And then I added international entertainment instead of just musicians. And that was a huge hit. I don't know if any of you saw some of the entertainment, but it's always interesting. We have twelve farms. And we know that fifteen hundred kids ate fresh fruits and veggies with their healthy bucks that they could then take and feel empowered to pick out their own fruit, try something new, and pay for it. We had our second annual Kids Day where kids are actually vendors. They pay ten dollars and then they can set up the booth. We provide all the tables and tents. But this gal was adorable and really went all out. So we really worked harder on getting a bigger survey. So three hundred and twenty people were surveyed, up from two hundred and thirty last year. It just takes time and effort. The interns did a great job. And we learned that we have visitors from Pierce County, King Counties, Snohomish, Thurston, Yakima, and Mason Counties. We know that twenty-three percent of our markers shot from outside the fifty mile radius, which to me is a huge number. Forty-eight percent, the majority, spend fifteen to thirty dollars at the market. And sixty-six percent shop at other stores and town center, which just goes to show that it helps the economic impact in the area. Has a strong economic impact. So thirty-five percent come every week and thirty percent come every other week. And ninety-six percent said that they recommended the market to a friend because it's local and fresh. We were fortunate to have the band, the military brass band come. They were phenomenal and free. Sixty-seven percent of the people that shop here visit other farmer's markets. So these are people that are really making a habit in their life. And forty-six percent are sixty-one and up. Forty percent are thirty-one to sixty. So this is a big change that has to do with the healthy bucks, getting a younger crowd that are bringing their kids. They keep coming back because it's quality, quality product, quality prices. So thank you all for coming out and supporting it. I see your faces out there, it's wonderful. Sure. We always have a group that say, please do it on the weekend, please do it in the evening. I think we'll always have that. From what Mary has told me in the past, that they've tried it, they've tried to do an evening one and it didn't gain any traction. You know, it's tricky also. I think it would just be tricky because our, you know, operations and maintenance are out there helping. They're, they're off by three. It would be very tricky to do it logistically. It takes a lot of manpower to put this on. I would, I would love to see it personally just because I want everyone in the community to experience it. So I haven't ruled it out and I am trying to be open-minded to think of ways that we could somehow accommodate that. Well, one thing I've learned is, like with the parade, you build it and they will come. It's amazing. I think people are flexible. I, I think it's really important to have restrooms and to have storage for tents and tables. And that's definitely something to think about. That said, anything's possible, anything's possible. So just very quickly, we have a new event. The Move With The Music Summer Concert Series. We had three this summer, we'll have eight next summer with our lodging tax fund. So we're gonna be working on that very shortly. But it's amazing, it's a beautiful facility. It's a community gathering place, there's Jason. People were up there, out there dancing, it's wholesome, it's for all ages. Spontaneity at its best, we've got people up there grooving. People just bring picnic baskets and blankets and they just settle in. So it's just a wonderful feeling and it can accommodate so many people. The parking's free, it just couldn't be better. So we'll try to keep it family-friendly and have new fresh bands and we'll have people's dogs there. Very culturally diverse and we'll make sure our music is representative of people of all cultures. Quickly moving on to Truck and Tractor Day, I just have one picture, kind of that quintessential. It was bigger than ever. It was bigger than ever. Again, parking was a big issue with that one. And we have an upcoming father-daughter dance on February ninth, it's the eighties glow party. And of course, we have all our other events. I just didn't wanna overdo it. And that is the culmination of my presentation. We've been blessed with amazing weather this year. I know, I know. Yeah, weather makes or breaks it, it was just. It was thousands. Well, that, yeah, that was Mark's run. It was about thirty people. About two hundred and fifty. Yeah, we had about two hundred and fifty. Yeah, you know, we, it was originally, it's always that first Friday. But there was, there was a holiday. I can't remember the name of it, but we moved it because of that. But that, I like that idea, yeah. But it was funny because I was telling someone, oh, it's my third year. I, I don't get that event high anymore. I kinda missed that. But I got the high, yeah, on Saturday for sure. That was really amazing.
I mean, people were, the, the tree being out front, even though it's fake, right? It, it really, there were people out there, as I was walking out, that was my last deal, I walked around there. Besides with the Grinch, there are people taking pictures. I even, I even volunteered and took a picture of this little family, the guy works over here at DSHS. And it's his four little kids and they were in front of the tree. And I said, I'll take a bit, oh, yeah, sure. And people were just hanging, milling around. It was amazing. But, but that's what a nice night does for you. A lot of people. And the road was closed.
Yeah.
But the, the, the road being closed.
And public works worked really hard, police worked really hard and, you know, we, it was big team effort. The vendors were happy, yes, they were, they were. Oh, that was amazing. So, yeah, and thank you for your support and for being out there at the events. They did. Oh, we'll tell them that. Santa. Yeah, we had a tremendous amount of volunteers.
Last but not least. This water feature. We're thinking a big canoe on the.
The ice arena.
I was just so happy to hear about the travel revenue aspect of the project. It's gonna be an easy place to find for this.
So a slight disclaimer, the presentation has a few slides out of order from what's in the packet. Content's all the same, but I'll, I'll do my best to tell you which slide number we flipped to. So good evening, Deputy Mayor and members of the council. We're excited to present a revised Colonial Plaza design for you all tonight. Since our last meeting, we have hired two new team members through KPG Consulting. They were both involved in the charrette process back in two thousand and sixteen. So they're very familiar with council's vision and assisted us in creating this design concept. After our last meeting, we started to brainstorm ways that we could enhance the design that we presented and decided that it would be beneficial to go and look at what other jurisdictions have done. So with that, we took a tour to really kind of observe different materials, the wear and tear on materials. For example, stamped concrete can fade, pavers can move about. And with that, we went to the cities of Kirkland, Renton, Redmond, Auburn, and Tacoma and looked at their different festival streets. And after deciding that some of the materials we saw would likely work well here, we reached out to those jurisdictions and the manufacturing companies that made the materials we were interested in in order to learn more about the assembly, ongoing maintenance and what, and cost considerations. So what would and would not work for our project. In doing that work, we pretty quickly eliminated a couple of options because they either required really high maintenance to continue to look nice or they just didn't withstand the test of time. So throughout this process, internally, we've had bi-monthly review meetings with our staff. So this has been a real collaboration between parks, community development and planning. And we've completed the technical easement component. So the meets and bounds for the easement specifically in front of the Colonial Center. And we've really coordinated with those property owners to continue to move forward. So to present the general timeline, when we started the design concept planning earlier this year, our hope was that we could have construction completed by September twenty nineteen. And as of today, we are still on target. There are, however, a couple of things that need to happen in order for us to continue to meet that deadline. First off, we need to approve a design concept. And once that is done, then we can move forward with securing property rights to the easement, the required easements and/or dedication. That third bullet point is really the crucial spot. And that's because if we delay advertising the project, then it's very likely that our costs will increase. And so if we don't meet that February, March deadline, then I think it's unlikely that we'll be able to get a competitive bid and we would likely have to postpone the project an additional year. However, we are optimistic that we'll be able to meet that February, March deadline, assuming the other two fall into place, meaning that in spring of this year, we'll be, or next year, we'll be able to start construction and complete construction by September of twenty nineteen. So getting into what we are proposing to build, we're gonna start by looking at kind of the grander scale of this first design concept. We are going to present two general concepts to you by and large, they are the same. The main difference is what separates the cars from the pedestrian promenade area. In this first area, or in this first overhead, there's those bollards, which are the little black spots there. In design concept two, those are replaced by planter boxes. And we'll have more of a, an overview of that in a few slides. So as, as a total, we are proposing to retain access off of Gravelly Lake Drive through Whitman Avenue. The entire street, though, will be improved in a way that will allow for flexibility. So for example, for major events, we could choose to close off the entire street, in which case we have the drive aisles, which have been improved using colored concrete and scored concrete. Each one of those little squares in the drive aisle and the parking spaces are ten by ten, which is the perfect size for a pop-up tent. If we decided to close half of the street for a smaller scale event, by having the perpendicular parking, people could access the site off of Whitman or Gravelly and be able to use the drive aisles to back up, but still have those parking spaces accessible without disrupting any event that's happening in the plaza. Outside of special events, we really wanted to make an accessible, day-to-day, multimodal destination. So overall, there are three different gathering spaces that I wanna focus on. The first is the almost sixteen and a half thousand square foot pedestrian promenade that would always be open. The second is the Grand Plaza, which is just under nineteen thousand square feet of paved area. So in combination with that pedestrian promenade, it's almost thirty-five thousand five hundred square feet of improved area, which for comparison, the existing farmer's market area that we have is just over twenty-six thousand square feet or point six acre. The pedestrian promenade in combination with the plaza is thirty-five thousand five hundred square feet or point eight of an acre. So almost two, point two acres larger. Lastly, we could use the entire street for events, which is a hundred and sixteen feet wide, six hundred and twenty-five feet long, totaling seventy-two thousand five hundred square feet or one point seven acres. So shifting over to automobiles just for a minute, because this will still be. So shifting over to automobiles just for a minute, because this will still be accessible. Um, our engineering team spent a lot of time ensuring that this is a very attractive space, but is also safe. So with that, we are recommending a couple of traffic calming measures in order to reduce the amount of cut-through traffic that we currently see on Motor Avenue. The first is, as soon as you enter or exit the site, you are going to have a speed bump on either side. Um, next, the drive aisles that are being proposed are relatively narrow compared to what you'd find on a regular thoroughfare at only twelve feet wide. And we've anchored the site with landscaping islands as you enter, on the outside of the plaza side, on each side. As well as while you enter and exit on the other side, so that kind of creates the view of a smaller, tighter space, which is going to help calm traffic. Lastly, the plaza itself is going to be elevated about eight inches. And what's that gonna do is kind of create a small, a small speed bump, but from an aesthetic point, when you're standing there, it's gonna be curbless. And so even though we are improving the entire street, the plaza's really gonna feel like a specials, a special place.
So when you say speed bump.
Yeah.
Something this wide, or is it more like the speed bumps that we have on the streets that are like six feet wide?
They'd be, the, the six feet wider speed tables, this would be an actual speed bump with a little bit more algebraic difference to it, that would actually slow traffic down. We really need to cut the speeds in a third from what they are now, your, your speeds right now are averaging at about twenty-eight, twenty-nine miles an hour. With the perpendicular parking that, that's being presented here, we really need to get that down to about ten miles an hour in order to safely keep traffic moving through there.
So, let's see, did they post a speed limit?
We've recommended not to post a speed limit, and instead, um, have.
Are you coming off of thirty mile an hour speed on the motor avenue? That enters, it's an accident, and if you don't post something, when people are going to, they'll have thirty miles an hour in there.
The, the, the current, yeah, the, the, the current thought process behind not posting it is, is if we don't post it, it's twenty-five miles an hour, uh, li- like everything else is. Some, some streets we don't post, and it is twenty-five miles an hour. If we were to put something in there, it would be twenty-five miles an hour. Uh, I would not recommend right off the start, because of the fact you have these two speed bumps in, in combination with the speed table in the middle. I don't feel like that's gonna be a, a great driver for, you know, excessive speed. I, I feel like, at least at the start, you should look at these options, probably, I would recommend looking at these options as, uh, as, as your preliminary countermeasures against speed.
So roughly thousand, twelve hundred vehicles a day that come up Mount Tacoma, transition onto Motor Avenue, but the main changes. And come through this section now, where we expect that we do this. That going to increase the number of people that turn left or right at, at, at Whitman. Um, and we will probably decrease the number of people that use this as their main access rather than, I'm going to return if they're, if they're. You know, reverse them onto probably up, up to the rank, turning. What, what is the traffic lane for bikes? I don't think bike lanes.
So the proposal is that the type of speed hump or bump that we end up putting in, um, would actually have little cut-throughs that we've seen in other jurisdictions. So that bikes could eas- more easily move through. And we have identified a couple of spots here and on the other side as well, where there will be bicycle parking. So we'll provide bicycle parking, um, but the idea is that, you know, hopefully during construction, habits change. And then soon after, once people see the improvements, it'll become less of a cut-through street and more of a destination street. Making it really, um, accessible and safe for multimodal transportation, including bikes and pedestrians and drivers really sharing the space.
And if we can get, I think we're hoping that we get some redevelopment.
Yes. So it really becomes, people will go here.
In my mind, the whole thing is premised on some redevelopment, if we don't get a redevelopment, we're, we're kinda, otherwise we gotta start moving stuff down there to try to.
So day-to-day, I think that this will function more as a parking lot, kind of, um, in terms of speed. Where people will go there to experience the plaza area, the pedestrian promenade, and visit the businesses. They won't go there so much to just cut through onto Whitman.
How will you, um, address skateboarders, because you know they're gonna go there?
That's a good question, and something that we haven't, uh, uh, haven't considered yet.
Let me get that t-shirt.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I'm not sure. I want to, um, introduce an additional exhibit that wasn't included in the packet. And what this shows, um, is the right-of-way line, the existing right-of-way line. And what I specifically want to point out is the northeastern corner where there are, the oak grove is. That we do have about eighty-five hundred square feet there, and right now, the improvements go up to the oak grove, but we haven't proposed any improvements there. But there would be plenty of space should you choose to extend the project.
So a little upper corner there.
Yes.
One of the things we, I threw out at the meeting about signing last week, maybe two weeks ago. Maybe that would be a good corner to maybe have an improvement towards, or as far as, might be a good place to have a little, some sort of economic signage, maybe for city activities to note. But there's some space there, we can do something.
I'm suggesting that if the, that is a public location for public art columns.
What are you thinking of the R A? They, uh, you, you mentioned, or somebody mentioned.
Is that, or are your feet style, ground concrete thing, your feet deep quality?
Do whatever we desire.
But are they wide, or is it?
Sure.
Is it a placeholder or a deep?
So looking, yeah, looking at, um, more, looking more into the details. We do have two spots dedicated, identified for public art columns. Um, and we were planning to meet with the Arts Commission starting in January to discuss that. We're anticipating twenty-five thousand dollars from the Nisqually's to be able to dedicate to that public art. Um, and there, I believe, there are any additional money questions? So the twenty-five thousand dollars is. Twenty-five thousand.
They call it something else, though, because the guy, the, the McLeod guy came and talked about, and they don't call it a totem. They call it a welcome thing or something, and they, they put it there in villages. He would, he, he told them, it's not a totem. A totem is a story, and this is a, something a little shorter that's a welcome.
So looking a little bit more at the details, um, starting with the plaza space. Um, we're trying to design it for flexibility, so we're suggesting that the plaza pavers be set in concrete. So they can withstand vehicle traffic as well as still be charming and, um, used for special events as the plaza. A new feature is this catenary lighting, here's one example of it, and here is a second example of it. Which, under the current, um, design, would span the length of the plaza. Another, um. Sixteen and a half feet.
It's, it's the same clearance we require for our signal, traffic signals, so it wouldn't be any different than anything else. It wouldn't, any, anything higher than that requires an oversized load, which we get the permit and can dictate the, the route, we would mark that on our maps, so something to mark.
Is that similar to what others, did you look at in January, about sixteen and a half?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay lighting at that level?
Yeah, it really kind of brought the space together, it was something we saw in a lot of the different spaces, that, it was just really beautiful. Undergrounded, correct. And then, um, these would be timed as our streetlights would, so they would light up the night. Other, um, features are these decorative streetlights, there are thirteen proposed in between thirty-five street trees. And surrounding the street trees and in between, there is decorative, um, seating, that's kind of in the form of benches as well as bike racks. For the sidewalks, we're proposing two-by-two scored concrete as opposed to the traditional, um, five-by-six. And we've already discussed the public art example.
Two foot by two, playmate?
Yeah, two.
Like up there?
Yep.
Feature to put in?
Two by two. Here are, um, some examples of street trees. We're going to, so there's space for thirty-three to thirty-five street trees, depending on which of the design options we decide to go with, sixteen of which are smaller accent trees. And we'll be working with our design team to ensure that we choose a tree, um, that isn't going to disrupt any of the paving materials long-term. But we'll still create that really beautiful park-like canopy. Looking at, um, option two, the difference is right here in the plaza, in place of bollards, we have these two, um, additional street trees to disrupt cars from entering into the pedestrian promenade. There's pros and cons to both choice, um, the bollards provide better sight distance, so if we were to have a concert or something, it might increase visibility. They are additional, they are additional cost, about fifty thousand dollars more. Um, and what's also nice about the street trees is that we would provide seating here in the plaza, and I'll provide diagrams for that here in a couple of slides, actually coming up. So here is a street view of the existing Colonial Center Motor Avenue. And here is an after simulation, and this is with design concept B, you can kind of see the planters here in the plaza area. From another view, really to accent, um, the Grand Plaza. A before and after, and this also does a great job of showing the depth of this sidewalk, which we haven't even really addressed here, it's sixteen feet, um, in some areas. And eight feet in others, once you figure in the planter boxes. So our next point of discussion is the budget. Um, the current total project cost is two point six six four million dollars. Um, the reason that it's increased since our last discussion is a couple of things. First, the lighting increased from seventy-five thousand to four hundred and fifty, and this is due to the number of lighting. We increased the pedestrian scale decorative lighting by two, and the catenary lighting is an additional, um, three hundred thousand. There is a natural breaking point for cost savings here, right where the dark brown line is. Where we could scale back the catenary lighting as an alternative, instead of extending it over the drive aisles, that's one consideration to save costs.
So what would you do, just move it back?
So, we, it, it would, it would reduce it by a hundred and fifty thousand, because essentially, we would be only installing over the pedestrian promenade and not extending it over the plaza. So as opposed to over the plaza, I agree, it's, it's beautiful over the plaza, but to save costs, you could just have it over the, um, the, the walking path.
You, you know where I would, because I do, I do worry about the overall cost, because I think when we go next year into this, it'll be even higher. And, and we do want to do the art, too. I kind of wonder if there's almost too many trees that we're, we're creating. It's, it's one of those things, you plant trees because they're small when you plant them, and then a few years later, you're like. And, and, and we hurt the streetscape a little bit, I mean, everyone loves a tree, and I know it's heresy to. But it, it just seems to me like, in the, in the examples, and I appreciate that you didn't fully grow it, that there are, there's an awful lot of them. And it might affect sightlines if we want to do events, I don't know, throwing that out there.
So relatively for cost, they're about twenty thousand dollars per planter box, including the tree and landscaping. So it's less than some of the other cost-saving measures. Um, believe it or not, this is a scaled back version from, from what we've seen for trees, but we could definitely consider removing. They're smaller accent trees, so in, they would be like, they're shown here as a cherry blossom. We have concerns about using a cherry blossom, um, with their rooting mechanism, unless we can. Mm-hmm, but in the, so they're the smaller, the smaller cherry blossoms kind of shown in the simulation.
I think if you get rid of four or five of them. It does say it helps.
To remove trees.
It does help.
Okay. So the Lakewood, um, Historical Society, the Lakewood Museum is actually in the process of taking the former Lakewood Terrace Restaurant in the front portion of the theater. They've already applied for their building permits and are, um, in the process of completing that tenant improvement to be able to move in, hopefully at the first of the year. So from my understanding, after talking with the Colonial Center, that's a temporary occupant, but it is something to get the doors open. And, you know, turn the lights on so that people can see, and it also boosts the Historic Society and the museum a little bit, um, to give them a little more desirable of a location. So some other, um, cost-saving considerations would be to square off the plaza. You can see, um, in the handout that I provided, rather than flipping back, that we right now kind of have it in a T shape. And by squaring it off, it would reduce costs by about ninety thousand dollars. In addition, um, the contingency right now that's built into the budget is two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. So if we took some of these other cost-saving measures, it would also go down. So we're estimating a potential savings of between two hundred and ninety and five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, depending on what you'd like to include or remove. So with that, I'm going to shift over to Troy, who's going to discuss annual maintenance costs and options and recommendations.
So in the graphic, uh, on the screen, there's a blue section, which is your day-to-day type of maintenance. We kind of split this up between kind of multiple functions of the maintenance. The blue section is the day-to-day maintenance, three times a week, you go out and pick out the trash, uh, the, the trash bins. You sweep the sidewalks, you sweep the road once a week, there's so abouts, a- a- anything that needs to be done, that's kind of the day-to-day. We, we, we found out that's roughly around forty thousand dollars per year, on average across the board. Calling around to various municipalities, it can range anywhere between fifty and a hundred thousand on, on, on very, very high-maintained projects. And then twenty thousand in, in some projects that quite aren't, aren't quite as nice, and to be honest with you, don't look that great today, they don't look very well maintained. The orange sections are the more long-term replacement sections, replacing streetlights that, that are going bad. Or every three years, for the first nine years, you need to put a coat, coat of, uh, sand out on the pavers, that sort of thing. So you'll see the spikes here and there, that kind of just came in that way over the, over the twenty-year maintenance cycle that we have there. And that ranges, I think, the highest in twenty eighteen dollars is right around sixty-five thousand, uh, per year. But again, it's twenty years out, so the inflation will be just a little higher. I want to talk to you about some of the options that you have. I want to talk to you about some of the options that you have before you. Option one is you can complete the street construction and maintenance costs are too expensive. The city could halt the project, return the grant money and re-prioritize the street funds. That's always the option you have before you. Option two, you could proceed the, with the project based on the budget amount we currently, we, we have given you before of two million, one twenty-seven. That would require cutting back some of the options that we, we have. Option three is proceed with the budget based upon the new budget, amount of two point six six four million. Option four is to eliminate some features to bring the project within a budget you're comfortable with. Or option five is to move forward with alternate bids of options two and three. This option provides the greatest flexibility for the city. And that mainly kind of gets, gets to what you guys would prefer to see come bid time.
So what are, can you quickly go through the sources where we got lined up? What's expected from us, what we got from the state?
So roughly what we got from the state is four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. It's a five hundred thousand dollar earmark passed through from the Department of Commerce. The remainder is borne upon the city. We don't have any other funding other than the. Correct, there's REIT, there's REIT, MVet and Swim Money, I believe makes up the balance of it.
My preference is to be a little rough. I like, I like the concept of people together. I think that it, like, do it like, you know, first time, you know, the expectation, the, you know, I worry about it. More rapidly becoming other victims. If we do things and, and, and with the best of intentions, we eventually do things. And, and, and that, that, that's what happens with option five. We can go to the stadium, we'll do it or maybe not. Let's have a game this day. Let's commit, I agree with Paul that maybe two, six, they move to, to eight. When, when we actually end up doing it or going on. But let's, you know, let's have a quality plan and, and, and move forward with it and, 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 and find a way to accomplish that. I agree.
So do I. Your only suggestion, I feel, I like, there's tons of lights over at the tree. But maybe, maybe a slight reduction with the trees. I, I do take that, they're going to grow and they're going to spread. I don't think we lose a lot if we take out two or three or three trees. And, yeah, I, I think that we're going to do this, you know, not actually have access around. We're going to do it, we're going to do lights, we're going to do lights first top. Not to, you know, you build something and we have to come back two years later, oh, by the way, we've got to add this, we've got to add that. So we're going to do this, this way. As I see this central, towards the, we'll pick them up.
So what, what I'm, we have a, we have a couple of, we have a couple of options, I guess. So option three is to proceed with the, with the full design. We did present two kind of general design concepts, one of which is with the two center plaza trees. And the other is with bollards in place of those plaza trees. What I'm hearing is maybe we have too many trees. And so it might be better to go with the bollards. And then.
I think for this, my personally, and I'm, and, and, okay, so design isn't ideal. So this might kill it. But I think that the bollards, which open up that, which gives us the ability to do an event there of some sort with good sightlines. And then I'm with John where you go into those.
Maybe eliminate one here and over here.
Three, three, and you take out, and you can save maybe a hundred thousand on that. I'm, I'm amazed it's twenty thousand dollars a tree. But, and then, and then we, because I, I really, I really do think when you start with the concept at almost two point seven million, it's going to be higher. That's my concern, that it really starts to get up. So we might need to draw this back more for a target of two and a half and, and, and see if you can keep it below, you know, at, at two, six or so. I think this is why we run circuses.
But you know what, Paul, I, I, we live in the state, I was thinking, could we play small, big wood? And use centering right there. I was thinking like, something maybe can be a little different.
What?
Even the mayor sent me a picture of a big fountain.
Big fountain.
Some say that, you know, we're going to take, we can save somebody else trees. Then let's.
Small water feature.
A, a small water feature. Because I, I think that would just round this a lot.
One area that we, we might be able to consider doing that is in the center front art column space that we already have identified. That's a fairly large place. And we, like I said, we're going to the Arts Commission in January, so maybe we can explore that idea. In the meantime, I, we can work with the, with our team and evaluate what it would look like to remove some of the trees and where we could maybe naturally find some gaps.
So in that little feature where we're going to put the square columns or if that one's going to be a little bit of a water feature as part of everything. What are the plans of lighting there? Since we're doing electrical anyway, it'd be nice to make sure that that's the entry coming out.
You didn't actually. So we, we already have that budgeted in to uplight these two entryways. And we also have electricity going to the light, or to the, each tree, which will be great for markets, for people to access electricity as well as Christmas time, to light it up with Christmas lights.
So if you put the bollards in, you save money?
So bollards is factored into the pro, the project cost, but it's fifty thousand dollars more. So it's, it goes into that project es, the total estimate of two six six four.
We'll get rid of some trees to pay for.
Okay.
Four, four trees. I can't believe it's twenty grand apiece.
So.
I don't know what it is for the traffic safety stand. Because we run into everything apparently in this city.
It'd be behind the curbing.
Oh, okay, okay.
If, if you're planning on putting it in that area, there's curbing in the, in the two arts. Yeah.
Okay, that's great.
We can explore options. So what I'm hearing is, oh, sorry.
Oh, throw coins in, yeah.
So what I'm hearing is a consensus for option three with the hope of maybe eliminating some trees, seeing the price point for a water feature, which we can incorporate with our discussion with the Arts Commission in order to move forward, making that we have a, a general approved design concept. So we can move forward with securing those property rights and then hopefully make our bid deadline, or we will make our bid deadline of February through March.
That's great. One question on the easement that we're grabbing. It's the easement obviously from the basic property and there's phenomenal ring on the right.
That's the only, so there's two easements that are in process. The first is the one outside of the Colonial Center, which is the, what we need in order to have the Grand Plaza design. And we've been working closely with them. The other one is actually between Parks and the owner of the QFC property for special event access to the Best Western because we're going to be closing their drive aisle during special events, and that's also in process. No. We're under negotiations with that right now, so we'll see. What, our, our hope is that they'll pick up after themselves. So that's what we're negotiating the terms of right now.
So one other question, is there any plan? And I know Glenn's been asking for the clock.
So the clock tower would be another thing that could go into that public art area. And right now, the city doesn't own the clock. I know that the historic, he, he informed me that the Historic Society is going to work with them and he would bring it up to the Arts Commission in possibility of restoring it. The estimate that we were given this morning was that it would cost between fifty and sixty thousand dollars to restore the clock, which, yeah, which kind of ruins our, eats up our arts budget.
I'll try and, try and keep this brief, given the time. Spent most of the day down in Olympia today waiting to testify in front of the Joint Committee on Veterans and Military Affairs. So they were, they wanted to hear testimony. They actually invited me down to talk about the Military Benefit Zone. The, actually Senator Conway was chairing the committee meeting and most of the attendees, actually all of the attendees who were on the committee were all from Pierce County with the exception of one who represented both Pierce and King County just because of the district he, he represents. So long story short, it was a, it was a good crowd to present to. But Senator Conway looks like is going to be the prime sponsor in the, based on what I heard this afternoon, on the Senate side. And Representative Kilduff is going to be the prime sponsor on, on, on the House side. And since the Democrats are in charge, that's a, that's a good thing. So you got two Ds, two Ds on that. But overall, the, it was good questions and the feedback was, 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 was positive. At your next meeting on the ninth, I'm going to have our team, probably led by Shannon Kelly-Fong, to give you an update on the recent FCC ruling. You might have seen something on that. Let me find my cheat sheet here. They basically, FCC provided direction to telecommunications industry that results in the acceleration of the deployment of 5G technology. Long story short, it basically cuts in half essentially the timeline that cities have to be able to react to request, franchise requests from about a hundred and twenty days to either sixty or ninety debate days, depending upon if it's existing facility or a new facility. That goes into effect on January fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. So far, we have only gotten one inquiry and it, it's, it's, it appears to be a subsidiary corporate, a subsidiary company of AT&amp;T that wants to move forward with 5G technology. And they want to use two city poles out in the Pacific Highway South area. Don't know the exact location, but they were just calling, inquiring and talking about this. And so we do know that cities nationwide, particularly the larger cities, are very, very upset with this. And so there's probably going to be litigation. I do know that our own state legislature is looking at continued language on this as well. In the meantime, in order to protect the city of Lakewood, either from being held liable by not conforming to this, if that encases what the case is going to be, or to be able to position ourselves for, you know, future legislative action, we have begun to look at this. And so as part of your December, I'm sorry, January seventh, two thousand nineteen meeting under reports by the city manager, we want to give you a more comprehensive update than what I have for you, for you, for you this, 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 this evening. Last Friday, met with the library. They, they were in a very, very good mood since their levy lid lift passed by, by a very small margin. They did share with us a map of the Lakewood precincts. And overall, kind of estimate that Lakewood carry was, was in the yes side by about fifty-four or fifty-five percent yes, which means Lakewood and parts of University Place, if not for that, the levy probably wouldn't have passed. Also, the turnout in Lakewood, just like in Pierce County, was higher than normal for this, for, 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 for this midterm election cycle. So that's a, that's a, that's a positive. We talked in great detail about next steps in terms of a capital bond. Could they go to the voters and be ready in November two thousand nineteen? The short answer is yes. However, it would be very, very tight because they got to go through design, they got to form a capital campaign, they got to get it on the agenda, they got to do public outreach. So what they are thinking now is actually go in two thousand twenty. And actually, they used Lakewood as an example. One of the things that they were impressed with was the amount of community involvement and participation that we undertake, undertook as part of the downtown subarea planning process. And they would like to do something similar. So they would like to go through a comprehensive public engagement process with Lakewood. And you do that in two thousand nineteen and do a bottom-up as opposed to a top-down approach. So they're going to go back and look at some schedules and then we'll probably get together in the January, February timeframe. I've also suggested that in the spring, sooner rather than later, that perhaps there's a joint meeting between the Library Board and, and this body as well to talk about next steps as well. So also, one of the things that the executive director mentioned to me is apparently the school districts are going to be going back to the state legislature to have, to see if the legislature will lower the approval rate for capital bonds from a super majority of sixty percent to a simple majority of fifty-one percent. That's been floating around for the last couple of years. But apparently the school districts, along with some other special districts, are going to be pushing that relatively hard this time.
I saw something TVW where they were discussing, and they were, the one side was starting out fifty-five percent. I don't know, it might have to be, it might be a constitutional change.
I, it's. I don't know, I don't know. I, I, I do know the history is. Yeah, it was in the thirties. It was in the thirties or early forties. So, because at one time, at one time, they were all fifty plus one percent. They were all simple majorities, so. But in any event, and so the library districts are jumping on board with that. And so, you know, that could be a change in the foreseeable future as, 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 as well. So, because that sixty percent is a very, very high threshold, very difficult threshold to, to, to overcome. Also, wanted to bring to your attention, the, the county council is looking to consider changing how conservation future monies, beginning in two thousand nineteen, or maybe just in two thousand nineteen, are allocated. Basically changing the current criteria to prioritize that those monies be used solely for, or not solely, but mostly for agricultural purposes, agricultural lands. The result of that is cities in the urban and suburban environments, which benefit very well from conservation futures, we would be literally left out in the cold and we would not compete. We would not be able to compete. Since nineteen ninety-nine, or since the cities incorporated, we have secured, you know, over one point six million dollars in conservation future funding, resulting in the acquisition of almost twenty acres of, 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 of parkland. So, you know, it's been a great, great tool for, for Lakewood. Ms. Dodsworth is going to be attending the public hearing on the eighteenth of December in front of the county council, expressing Lakewood's position is that that's something that we oppose. It's our understanding that the county council has, this has been initiated by a member of the county council because they have received a grant totaling seven million dollars that can only be used for agricultural land acquisition or preservation. And then they want, they need a match. And so they're looking at the conservation futures as a match. So that's as we understand it, based on our follow-up in some areas there. The forced silicon land transfer is moving forward. I think I had mentioned to you last week, we have one bump in the road, but now we might have two. Um, the Fort Stilicon land transfer, um, is moving forward, uh, I think I had mentioned to you last week, we have one bump in the road, but now we might have two. The first bump in the road is that DSHS, uh, the whole issue over the water rights. Our position is that that comes with the land, um, that's, you know, the, the budget proviso does not stipulate separation of any component of what's attached to the land and wells are attached to the land. In addition, their water system, we have done our own analysis, and long story short, it's a significant liability. If I was over at Western State Hospital, quite frankly, I wouldn't drink the water, that's how bad the system is. Um, and, uh, apparently, that's why they wanna transfer to the Lakewood Water District as, 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 as well. So, um, I did send a letter off to, um, uh, DSHS secretary, asking that she direct her staff to move this along. However, the second bump in the road, and I just learned this this morning, is that, uh, the budget proviso stipulates that the transfer of the land will be the land as identified in a legal description. I'm sorry, the, we'll, we'll, we'll transfer the land as identified in the ILA between Pierce County and the state, so that legal description. And so the state, based on the documents they have, only includes a portion of Fort Stilicon Park and not the whole thing. So we just found this out, we just figured this out this morning, and so we are now gonna have to go back and, you know, follow up with Pierce County and find out what the heck is going on here. Um, it, it could be, well, I don't know, I, I'm not gonna try and speculate what's going on, so. No, actually, we know that for sure is not, is not the case, so. I, I don't wanna speculate, uh, we, we're gonna go do our due diligence and, you know, we wanna check the records on, 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 on our ends. But obviously, the intent is to transfer the whole park. Matter of fact, DSHS has been working with the city and prior to the city with the county, as if it was the whole park. Um, and it could be worst case scenario that back in the day, when that ILA was formed, you know, back in the late sixties, between the county and the state, that language was left out. Don't know, but we're gonna, we're gonna do the due diligence on our side. So, yeah, we, we, we've inherited it, that's correct, but it all goes back to that original lease from the late sixties, so. Um, I think that the lease might have been updated, so, well, again, I don't wanna speculate, but I just wanted to give the council a courtesy heads up, another little bump in the road, so. Uh, economic development update, we've received two PDD applications, ones for the Ruby Drive property over in the Oakbrook neighborhood for sixteen units. And then the other is the Thornwood, um, Drive property over in Tillicum, um, off of North Thornwood, uh, Drive, um, right down by Thornwood Castle, as a matter of fact. Uh, nice, nice, uh, uh, Mr. Sager is, uh, moving forward on that project, so it's gonna be, that'll be a nice project. As a follow up, uh, to your meeting last week on the comp plan amendment process, um, I, I just, um, wanted to talk about, um, three of the items that are on the agenda, and they're all what's referred to as a process four. I'm sorry, a process five permit, um, which means they're area wide, and our code does not require or mandate that we notice all of the property owners individually. And so that pertains, for example, to the amendment to change the, uh, underlying zoning of, of, of the dwelling units on the R two from two point two to four per acre, and then there's a couple of others as well. Um, you know, the number of parcels are measured in the hundreds, um, unless I hear any objection from this body, because we have the technological ability to do it. I think we should notice all of the individual property owners. Um, I think in the past that the reason that that language is in the code is because, you know, twenty, thirty years ago, to do that was, uh, it was difficult. Um, and so that's why you would see the big signs out in different areas. Um, but I do feel strongly that we should do, um, you know, individual noticing to all the property owners, but again, unless I hear any objection from this body.
Well, one reason I think that the code, thinking back, was people were worried that it made a mistake and let some money out.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, we don't need to change code, but in practice, we can notify vast majority of property owners directly.
That's exactly right, yeah, so. Um, and then lastly, just from, uh, council calendar, uh, your next major, uh, community event is the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Celebration, which will be at Harrison Prep this year. And that will be on Saturday, January nineteenth. Um, and I have nine thirty to noon. And, uh, but, um, I think the official, um, event kicks off at ten, but we want you there at nine thirty. So with that, Deputy Mayor, this is my report.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for the city manager?
Going in behind, on fifty-ninth street here, across from the nail shop.
Thirty units, apartment complex.
That's what I, that's what I thought it was.
They're gonna be a driver.
Okay, okay. I've been asking, I've been saying apartments, but I wasn't sure. Thank you.
At, at the hearing maybe you have had today, is there any testimony from individuals, some places other than around maybe I have?
Uh, there was not, council member, it, it was, we were actually specifically invited. It was just about JBLM and. No, no. Ho- however, in our testimon- however, in our testimony, we did point out that this has the support of all of those communities, cause we've done outreach there.
On economic development, uh, at the parade of the night, the owner of the nail shop, did you hear there's some activity on the lot next door, do you know if I can put it in?
A drive-through, uh, there's a coffee drive-through, Dutch coffee, Dutch Brothers coffee, yeah. Yes, it's permitted, it's going through the process right now. Right at the corner of, uh, was it, um. Ardmore and Grav- is it? No, is it Alfreda? Lake Grove, I'm sorry, yeah, Lake Grove and, uh, Gravely Lake Drive. Yeah, cause they're gonna have, uh, circulation issues with the drive-through. No, no, it's all drive-through and, uh, you know, they're also gonna, they're also gonna bill to our design standards, cause it's part of the subarea plan, uh, cause they were not vested. Um, and then in addition to that, the traffic impact fees that they're gonna be paying, I think is, if the number I got was seventy, seventy thousand dollars. And they're fine with that, because they know that if they didn't pay that, they'd have to go do it all on their own, and it would be much, much more than that. Yeah, that's correct, yeah, so their project is gonna move a whole lot quicker than if we didn't have the planned action ordinance in place. Uh, probably spring.
Why didn't they have a rule that, that I watched, uh, because he used to always, you know, like, for it, because they're, yeah, it was these two brothers.
Yeah, two brothers, yeah.
And I watch undercover laws, actually now they're all, they're, they're, so.
They have, they have.
They used to see them live work, but it's, it's brother couple, it's really cool, they don't catch it.
Uh, so I guess they have quite a following, so, be good to get Starbucks. Well, I, yeah, we don't know, I doubt, I don't, I think it probably is, cause they are franchised, so. So we've heard in the past that they were gonna, um, do some, um, expansion over where the video, the stor- you know, the old, right, but they haven't, haven't. Is that, yeah, 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 but as far as doing like any major renovations, not, not to date, so.